Yeah, this is a regular meeting of the Montpelier City Council being called to order early because we're planning on a 30-minute session at the beginning to work on the city manager recruitment. We have everyone here and what I will do is talk about our meeting logistics now and then take up the other items, including approval of the agenda and general business and appearances after our this session. So, welcome, everybody. If the general rules and expectations are if you're joining remotely, please change your name display to indicate your first and last name. Anyone who's going to speak, we would ask you to start by stating your name and where you live. We ask you to keep your questions or comments to three minutes. If you're speaking about a particular agenda item, we would like you to keep your comments germane to that topic. Anyone who wishes to speak must be called on by the mayor. Once you're called upon, you may make a statement or ask questions, but we generally do not engage in back-and-forth dialogue with the members of the public who come to see us. Anyone who speaks out of turn, discusses non-germane topics, or goes on too long may be interrupted and asked to adjust your behavior. And with that, we are on to the first agenda item, which is city manager recruitment. And we have Ian Coyle here from Prakademic Partners. So Ian, want to take it away?
Sure. Can everybody hear me okay? Thumbs up? All right. I see some head nodding. So thank you. Good to see you all again. Glad to be on Zoom with you. I should follow directions. Ian Coyle, Livonia, New York. So I hope I have longer than three minutes, but be mindful of your time here. Kind of get right to it. We have a couple of action items for the group to consider here for things that are just sort of hanging out there that need a consensus, opinion and/or direction to move forward with that are elements of the search that we kind of have queued up and keyed up, ready to roll, but sort of needing that final approval. And it's frankly, not something I feel comfortable proceeding with on your behalf without knowing that I kind of have that consensus from you. So I don't want to make those decisions myself. But just to kind of set things in motion, we have the main questions relate to the public component and the public engagement component of the search process. So in your background information that was provided in consult with Tanya and also Evelyn and kind of dealing with Jack over these weeks, what this looks like is we've got questions on the public forum. So there was some question on the public forum as to timing. So the question is the timing of the public forum gaining inputs beyond the public survey, which is going to be sort of simultaneous to this with the emphasis being gain these inputs sort of now in advance of the recruitment brochure actually hitting the street. So in case we want to use or garner any feedback in that public engagement session for purposes of amending in any way what goes out on the street to say what we're looking for for the ideal characteristics, the city management profile, et cetera. Or do we want to not wait on that, go live with the recruitment brochure as it is, still do that facilitated public forum, but for the purposes of a different type of use of that data or that feedback. So for example, use in the screening, the vetting of candidates from those resumes that are coming in and so forth. So that's really the first question. So we would want consensus on, do we want to do the forum for the purposes of gaining those inputs in advance to use for the brochure? Or do we want to go live with the brochure and the recruitment and actually commence the recruitment now? And then and still do that forum, but use that data and those inputs for a different purpose? That's the question. First question.
So I will go with the second one because I personally want to start our search right away. But I also know that public engagement and input are so important. So I will vote if we, I will vote for the second one. Start the research and the brochure, right? And have a public engagement session and then use that input for the screening and also maybe to prepare interview questions.
Anybody else have any thoughts? Carrie?
I can see value in going both ways, but I think if we were able to logistically pull it off and do it right now before the brochure is finalized, I think that would be fantastic. Just to to make sure that people, that the public is giving us their input from the very, very, very beginning. And then if we may be able to, if we want to do another one, maybe we could, I don't know. But I think that starting off with a public process right at the very beginning, that's just just an open meeting, people come in and tell us what you think. And then finalizing the brochure and sending it out. I want to get it going as fast as possible too. But I think I think I'd be more comfortable with bringing the public in as sooner rather than later.
Well, there we go. Those are two, your directions is clear as it could be. Ian, I'll get you just a second. Sal, Ian, do you have a thought of how close we are on the brochure? And we all got it from you just the other day.
Yeah, I mean, I think certainly it's going to be, you know, one more round of deep reviews, edits and feedback from you all, but very close to being able to press play and kind of go live with the recruitment for sure. Yeah, I mean, we're right there. That being said, I want to be as nimble and responsive as I can be to all of you in terms of what that engagement portion is desired. So if right now we've only heard from two voices and we have a split and I understand that. But if indeed it's desired that we want to do it in advance, we'll do it in advance. And I should have, so I do want to hear a little more input on that. But I should have also said this, this is not the only mechanism that we have prepared for inputs too. So we have a very good public website. Evelyn's been fantastic in working through that. You know, the weekly updates, when the brochure is live, that'll be on there. What we plan for for the public engagement components beyond what we're talking about right now, you know, that'll be referenced on there. And then the survey, which people will be able to take, which again is a little bit predicated on your answer to this first question, that will also be an element of this too. So there will be lots of touch points for the public to be involved.
Thanks. Sal?
Well, I prefer doing it earlier rather than later, but it sounded to me like Helen's option was a third option that we send the brochure now as is, then we get the public input and we use that. Is that is that it? Option two? Well, all right, then I guess I'm listening to option two. I like option two.
Adrian?
When I read through this, I mean, both options are are fine, but I'm just thinking about schedules. And I know this for parents, this is like one of the busiest times of the year as we get our kids back to school. And I know when we, when I've scheduled anything that's public input or public sessions, I've always told not to do it in September. And so, and that's if we want the voices of, you know, half of Montpelier. I think people are very distracted. And so I would just caution us to think about the schedules, the calendars, people's lives. And I think the more notice people have, the better off they are. And with that in my mind, as I'm thinking through this and thinking of option one, option two, I think option two for me is is fine. I mean, I think there we would be fine with both. But I think option one, we would, if we set a meeting for a week, even two weeks, I think, I just think we're going to have limited engagement just because people are distracted this time of year. And I think that's a risk that we can avoid by option two by maybe pushing out till October and giving people some notice. That's just where my brain is.
Helen?
If I remember, if I understand and remember correctly, Ian can correct me. We are already collecting public input via different ways as early as possible. This public engagement session will be people who want to attend and share their input in person. So we will be distributing surveys and then other things. So it's just another way of, I think we will be asking public as early as possible their input.
Jim or Sal or Jim or Ben, do you have any thoughts?
I mean, I think actually I can see the merits in either one. Maybe I have a question for Ian, just thinking about, you know, I'm just thinking about certain professions like teachers or something like that, where the calendar is actually important in terms of when people are looking for jobs and their availability. And I'm just wondering, is that your experience in city manager searches? And is there any way in which kind of delaying the release of this kind of recruitment packet would potentially impact that opportunity? Does that make sense?
It makes sense. The question, it's a very good question. I think the fact of where we are right now, I think the relevance of that as an issue is muted at this point in time or, you know, not entirely moot, but it's, 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 because by the time we get out and we have the period of time for the release of the brochure and we have people applying, they know that that process takes, you know, X amount of months, basically. So they know if they were going to be selected for this position and sitting and seated in this position, it's many months ahead. So that that ship's already sailed, I guess, so to speak. But yes, it is a factor, you know, for some people, yes. But I think the timing that you're talking about is we're kind of past that already a little bit. So I think it's not that applicable.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
I guess if I had to state an opinion, like I really appreciate Carrie, the idea of like, we want to do it as early and often as possible. But the question is ultimately, would that that kind of public meeting materially impact the recruitment packet that would go out? And I actually feel really good about the recruitment packet right now. It's very broad. I think the public engagement actually will definitely help us winnow the candidates or, you know, I feel like it'll be very valuable in the selection process. But I do feel also a sense of urgency of let's get going. So I guess if I had to, I think I go option two.
How about we take a vote? Now, who favors option one? All right, let's, let's define the options. Sure.
I knew that we, the council will go with option two.
And and option, by option two, you mean get the finalize the brochure and get it out as soon as that can be done and then do subsequently do the public forum? And is there a second?
Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? Follows and favors signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right. Decision made. Ian? There we go.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. The next question is related to the stakeholder advisory panel that's been talked about and recommended in terms of the makeup of that and then also their charge. So their, their, their duties, if you will. So wanted your thoughts on that. I put together a framework, you know, I would call it a skeleton framework. And because the people and the players and the personnel, the three Ps, are really the folks that that you know certainly better than I do, who might be good representatives for these various placements. But I wanted your thoughts on the suggested makeup, but also the the expected duties of a group like this. So for example, I put together participation as audience members and viewers, observers, note takers, and then providing that observation and themes back to me through any public forums that are that are held. Review and provide feedback and suggestions on the profile, which sort of we can talk about. Participate in interviewing the finalists. I have participated in searches where there is a stakeholder group that does participate in some way through the interview process. We can talk about that. And then one thing I didn't mention here that I should have included is the finalist is not just the interview component. I think we'd really like to see that public kind of meet and greet style and maybe having some Q and A from the public for the finalists when we get to that point in time. So I think a specific component of the work of the stakeholder advisory panel would be, you know, making sure they attend that and then kind of providing their, you know, direct and specific feedback based on how they think that that forum went. So there's three or four kind of tasks I think that they could be tasked with, but but the who is first important. So thoughts on the suggested makeup?
Oh, yeah, I'm going to jump in just a minute. Tanya, I forgot to have you introduce yourself. And thank you for being here. You've been doing, doing a lot this year. So what? And it's been our main, become our main point of content. So, okay. Now, this is an interesting question. At the, at our last meeting, we were discussing, when we had a brief discussion before we realized this wasn't going to be a brief discussion on this topic, I started to hear a lot of people say, well, do we really need this stakeholder advisory panel? And so I'm not sure if all the council members are on board with doing that. And so I think we should get that clarified before we go too much down this road. And so I'll just ask if there's anyone on reflection thinks we shouldn't do it or thinks we should do it?
I feel pretty confident that we should do this just for, I mean, I recognize that any of these people could just come to a general public forum and, you know, provide input like everybody else. Like, I get that. But I think really having an identified stakeholder group, having them be able to talk amongst themselves, having them be able to really focus, recognizing that they've been asked to provide guidance and feedback, also recognizing this is totally a council decision, right? But I really like the idea of getting people with very specific but diverse points of view that could really, that are important constituents, that can really help us think about things that maybe we wouldn't otherwise know about. The other thing that I'll just say, and maybe this is, you know, if nobody wants the advisory group and this is mute, but I would also say, I would really like to see other city managers on this, you know, maybe two city managers. And it's not that difficult to think about who are the city manager stars that probably aren't going to apply for this job. I wish they would. But, you know, I think getting them to serve on this, I think, would be really helpful in understanding, you know, the importance of what we're looking for.
Thanks. Adrian?
I'll give the opposite side. I am against the advisory committee. I think it would have been a great idea if we decided not to go the route of hiring a consultant because that would be their role to help guide us, have that professional structure, you know, have those experts in the room to work side by side with the council. But we decided to go with a consultant who is helping guide us there. You know, Ian put together the survey, he's put together the recruitment packet, he's helping go through the resumes and filter them as a paid consultant. And I think there's still, you know, I want to be very inclusive. I think the stakeholders, when I was thinking through this, not necessarily a group that, you know, has to, you know, be live in a room together to advise us. But I think one way for us to think about engaging them is to send the long survey that we completed. So not the short survey, Ian, that's in the packet that will be sent to the general public, but the one that we completed, which was pretty lengthy and in-depth. I think it would be nice to have this representative group fill out that long survey to get their input, to get their suggestions, to have that cohort of people who are experts, who are former managers, really specifically targeting their input in that way, rather than having a subgroup having to meet and coordinate those meetings and then provide input back to the council. I feel like it's an unnecessary layer of bureaucracy that we don't need because it's our job to make this decision. And we did decide to spend money on a consultant to help guide us. So that's the other side where I'm thinking.
Carrie?
Yeah, so I was a little bit, I have been dubious about this idea, which I realized was largely because it was unclear to me exactly what this group was going to do or what the purpose of it would be. So I think Ian has done a great job of laying out clearly what this group would do. They all seem like, it seems like a great use of a group of members of the public to me. So I think this is a really good idea and I think we should do it. I think, I'm just thinking of all of the citizens of Montpelier I've talked to about the city manager process and how incredibly important it is to everybody I talk to that the public be involved in this, if this isn't a decision that a few people just kind of make on their own. And so ultimately, it's a city council decision. But the more structure we can have to getting that public engagement, I think, the better. So I like this. I have, I have thoughts about the composition of it. I think there's some, there's some changes that I would make if we get to the point of talking about that.
Helen?
So I like the idea generally, but I am a little bit, uh, how can I say? Not sure how many people we can include. If you ask me, I have too many people in my mind right now. And if each of us have that many or even five, then suddenly we have, what, 30, 40 people? And like the list we looked before, it was a good start, but it wasn't enough. So my concern is with the numbers. And if you have too big group, really we cannot get the result we wanted. If we have small group, then it won't be inclusive. Um, so maybe Ian can talk to people. We want to hear their input. Or as suggested, we can send a very detailed survey to them. Then we can create like a focus group. But yeah, my only concern is whatever we do, it won't be inclusive. And like someone will be excluded unless we have the group 50 or 60 people, which is not reasonable. So that's why I think we need to find another way to have more inputs from stakeholders. Thanks.
Sal?
I like the idea generally. I, any misgivings I have about it have to do really with the understanding that the members of this group have with regard to the agency that they have in making a decision. I, you know, I've been on the board for what, a little over two years, even though it seems like a lifetime. And, you know, there are a lot of things that, that the kinds of folks who are on this current list would be able to contribute that really, in my experience, you know, I don't, it's not that broad yet. And I think it's important to have that kind of input. I think Helen's right. We probably won't be able to get total representation, but I don't think we solve that problem by making a really large group. I think around a dozen people is about right in my experience with these kinds of groups. Anything much over that becomes sort of inefficient. So I support the idea of the panel. I think it's important to get their charge right.
Jim?
I'm going to be totally different from all of you. First of all, two years is nothing, Sal. I've done this for 12. So I'm elected to be a leader and I'm going to, I'm prepared to be a leader in picking this. The only way, if we were going to have this group, I only want two types on it, either former counselors or mayors or city managers. Because I don't think anybody in the public, unless you've ever done this job, really has the understanding that people who have done it have. And so I'm not inclined to listen to somebody who hasn't done, hasn't been in politics as an elected leader because it's kind of like to me being in a war. If you've never been in battle, you don't know anything about being in battle. So I'm not really, I don't really need a panel to help me out. I'm, I'm fully fine on making a decision myself. I do think what Adrian says is they can, the other people can come to the forum like everybody else. That way, nobody is missed out on being excluded. But I don't really need a panel to help me make a decision.
My thinking about this is that I think this has to be a process that's open to the public and is very visibly and clearly open to the public. And I, from what I, the way I hear people commenting in other types of decisions, that if we simply have a public forum or two, whereas we just throw it, throw it open for whoever comes on a particular night, what we will hear is, sure, they just made whatever decision they were going to make and they let people come in on one night to give themselves cover. And so that's, that's a concern of mine. Another concern is that I do think that there are members of the public who have a lot of, a lot of different kinds of experiences because it's not just, you know, being a city manager is a unique job. However, it has characteristics that are have in common a lot of other other focuses, like how are you in follow-through? How are you generating good ideas? How, how do you do in working with people? And those are not, people, members of the public who haven't been on the city council or haven't been a city manager are as well-suited to evaluating that kind of thing as, as anyone else. And so I'm inclined to do it and, you know, shoot for around a dozen members. Ian, do you have any, any thoughts to help us through this? Maybe talk about your, your experience and the value that you see in doing this kind of a panel?
Yeah, so just as I'm tracking things, I, it seems to be about a split. I counted maybe, maybe four in favor of it and three against it roughly, you know, but I could be wrong on that. So, you know, I do get a sense that there's, there is a split amongst the council and even wanting to do it. So potentially to resolve it here, the time that we do have, it would potentially be nice to, like you did for the one versus two, just to get some finality to it. If, Mayor, it's up to you if you want to say, just put it up for a up or down here to have it?
Yep.
Jack, if I could just say one more, I'm sorry, Carrie, I think I actually saw you in a, for.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I just did want to add one thing. First of all, I really appreciate, Jack, you're spelling out kind of how a process of public engagement can work and the importance of having lots of different input from different sources. And one of the things that we've noticed is getting the public to, to know what we're doing as city council or a city, city in general, and getting the public to understand what we're doing and getting the public to be involved with decisions and to give us their input is, it's not enough for us just to say, oh, our meetings are open to the public. Come on in and tell us what you want. And if you don't want to come to a meeting and give us your input, well, that's, you know, we have to do much more than that. And this is an opportunity for us to reach out and try to We have to do much more than that. And this is an opportunity for us to reach out and try to get people who aren't the ones who are naturally going to come anyway. And the people that we, that we hear from over and over again, we want to hear from those people, but we also want to hear from the people who on their own weren't. Necessarily going to have any input to this, but if they're asked, they have something to say. And so I like this because. It will definitely pull in some people in a clear structured way who. Probably wouldn't be involved otherwise. And hopefully they all have connections to other folks and so they, they can talk in their networks and they can get some information. From the people who are never going to come to a meeting and they're never going to fill out a survey and they're never going to go on Zoom. Um, so I think this is a good way for us to get as the widest input as possible.
Thanks, Gary. Helen.
I agree with Kelly. That's why I will propose another option. How about not having a group, but stakeholder. Session. So we can invite all the people we want to see. Like stakeholders and they can come like we will do public session, right? We can do a stakeholder session and like. If everybody has, I think so many stakeholder connections. So we can invite who want to be see, um, here and sharing their ideas. It doesn't have to be a group. Like, because again. It won't be really inclusive. So we can always find other, um, alternative ways to hear from stakeholders.
Ben. Um, just one thing, uh. Having been a part of hiring processes with a board of, you know, twelve, fifteen people, I think it's really important for there actually to be a group. Because the conversation, you know, when the youth representative asks something that makes the senior center representative think in a new way, that's valuable. So I feel like actually having a group that's based on sector specific. Um, you know, and it can't, it can't, you know, there's all kinds of sectors, but these I think are the kind of. Uh, are the key ones. Um, I, so I think that there's real value in that kind of cross pollination of specific sectors. And then the second thing that, and I think this is really important. If we don't have a group like this, that means that the city manager candidates are going to be interviewed by us. Alone. And I think like, we would really, I think it would behoove us. To have them be in different interview settings with different people and then to hear, how did it go? You know, and then just the other kind of like last thing that I really do have to mention is like nowhere in here, and I think this is a loss, is staff. Right? Is staff going to be involved in any of this interview? I mean, they're the people that are going to be working every day with city manager. You know, it's not their decision who they get to hire, but I think it's really important that we hear from them.
I, I think stuff will be interviewing and talking to. Uh, because the candidates, because we are already doing this with others, like we, when we hired. Uh, fire chief, they did this, right? So they will be included. I hope they will be included.
Oh, I, I definitely.
Yeah, so.
Yeah. And, and I think, and Ian, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like I remember from our initial conversations that. You have that in mind, that you have a process whereby staff will be included and engaged and get that input. And this is a different group.
Okay.
Than that. Yeah.
That, that's correct. Yeah. So, um. I'd say the majority nowadays for a city manager service, they're looking to involve the staff. In both the beginning and, and sort of towards the end. So the beginning for us was. Input solicitation from the senior staff department heads for the needs assessment, uh, much like you did as well as a council. And then towards the end, maybe either in a quasi interview setting, a conversational interview, a meet and greet with the selected finalists. Once we get to that point, that's a very common, um, you know, measure to allow for that staff input there at the end too. And it doesn't need to be just like the senior leaders. We, the most recent one I did, we had kind of an open forum with any staff member could go. Uh, and, and sort of just have a conversation with the finalist.
I'm going to invite someone to make a motion.
And, um. Should I make a motion based on my decision or is there any language, specific language do you want us to use?
Um. There isn't. I was actually going to encourage someone to make a motion to go forward with a, with a panel and then. Have the next step be to figure out who is going to be on the panel, but anyone's free to make the motion they want to make.
I'm not sure. I don't want to make a negative motion, so.
I, I make a positive motion.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Say.
Because, yeah, I know.
I, I move that we move forward with the stakeholder advisory panel as suggested by Ian.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So three to three? Uh, Chair votes aye.
Uh, can I?
Yes.
Uh, before we move forward, I want to see the list. And if I want to add or like remove something, I think it is important who will be there. And I really wanna. See inclusive panel or whatever we call. So. Uh, this is very important to me. So please, uh, let's make us see, let's make us see the list. Get our input, then move forward with it.
Oh yeah, I think that, uh, we probably. Recruit for people who want to be on the panel and then they, they get put on the panel by us.
Yeah, because like.
The way it works.
Yeah.
Your experience, Ian.
So, yeah, because the list before we receive, that's not a good list. It's a good start. It's not a good.
Um. Don't want to muddy the waters on this, but. The motion that just passed. It was the list as was provided, sort of the general, the general structure. So i- i- if we're going to carry that out, it just, to, to your point, um, uh. I, I think, I think the inputs from the council members on filling in the blanks, so to speak, of where, where, where we've got placeholders. I think now is the role for, for you to play, you know, from this point forward is, you know, get, having consensus upon what those names are going to look like, because really I just have placeholders in those sections.
Yep.
Thank you.
Carrie.
So then is, is now an appropriate time for us to look at this list and make a final decision about. Not the individual, not the names of the people who are going to be on it, but what the categories of representation are going to be.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Then I, then I have a couple of suggestions, um.
Yeah, that is in our packet, right?
Can I say something? I didn't prepare anything. So if we can wait until next one, I will be happy because I don't have any list to recommend.
Wait, it was in our packet.
Look, if I want to add. Am I clear? If I'm gonna add more things, right, to the stakeholder list? I just wanna, uh, be prepared to say anything. Is it, I think it is okay to wait until next, uh, week.
Helen, can I just ask a clarifying question? Do you mean like specific names or different sector types? Do you know what I mean? Like we have this list of different sectors, but are you, that's kind of what you're thinking? You want to think, you want more time to think about like different sectors that could be added?
Could we put this, uh, this sheet up on the.
Yeah.
Screen?
So.
Helen.
For example, I received a couple of, uh, input. So why there is only one commission here? What about other committees city has? So what about their chairs? That's what I'm trying to say. Or, okay, you said youth. Is it middle school? Is it high school? Or you are talking about young adult, you have college, but is a resident. So there are so many things. That's what I was saying. I just want to be a little bit. Uh, more prepared. That's all. And I'm just, I am checking other things. Yeah, again. In a general idea, I'm okay with it, but all the inputs I'm receiving, I need some time. Because I want to add more sectors here. Like there is no college representative here. There is no centers, uh. What's the career center represented? There, no one is here. So I just want to add a couple of stakeholders like that. And I think it is very rational thing to ask.
I'm Carrie.
Yeah, I, I also have several that I would like to add. Um, this was. This was in our packet and on our agenda as a decision that we would need to make tonight. I'm not sure we have time to do that. I'm not really sure where we are with the timing because we allowed half an hour for this whole thing. So it may be that we, we don't have time. This is probably a pretty meaty discussion of what this list should look like. So I guess that's my question to the mayor of, should we try to do this now or should we put it off and what that will do? Will that, you know, slow down the whole entire process too much? I guess that's a question to Ian.
I've got two thoughts. One is we set aside thirty minutes for this and it's now six thirty-nine. So we've. Gone beyond thirty, thirty minutes, which is not surprising. Two, we just decided earlier tonight. To, to get the brochure out. As soon as it's ready, which means that doing this, taking a little bit more time. Probably won't, uh, delay us. Is that, that, and I'm looking to, to Ian to see if he agrees with that.
That, that's correct. Yep. I mean, I think if, you know, to. You, you've got, you've got consensus, you know, via the majority vote here to proceed with a structure like this. And to have this group in existence and to help you out through the process. So, so that, that's success in terms of getting that done here. You know, I know it was a split vote, but okay, we got that done. We can move forward and it need not, um, it, it's okay if it's delayed. Because I, I think unless you want the stakeholder engagement panel. To, uh, participate, uh, in somehow in, in the, uh, commentary that you didn't want with the public engagement portion. Which I, I'm laughing. I don't think that you do. So as long as you don't. They have their charges, which can be still fleshed out and developed. They have their general makeup, which can be perfected, refined and, you know, codify whoever you want in there. And that can wait till the next time you, you gather for sure.
Okay, that's fine.
Um.
So we may have all we need tonight. Is that what you, uh?
I believe there is one other thing on the agenda, which would be to approve the survey. The questions as written, um, so that we could get that out fairly quickly.
Uh huh.
So it's the questions that are on the survey are to your liking. That would be what would go out fairly quickly.
And, uh, okay, go ahead.
I'm just gonna go ahead and move that we approved the survey as it's been presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thanks, Gary. Thanks, Tanya, for reminding me of that. All right.
Jack, can we just get a homework assignment maybe of like, how do we come into that next meeting? You know, like. You want to bring your thing, like, what can we do to make sure that the next time we have this conversation, it's as productive as possible and efficient?
Well, that's a good question. We have a list of, uh, of people that in indicated would be a good, uh. Selection. We might have, and that, I think that adds up to about eleven. People, you know. I would encourage everyone to look at this, maybe thinking about that list in terms of people you know, who you think should be, would be good people to, uh. To invite, um. But keeping in mind that if we get more, more than a dozen or so, it'll be kind of unwieldy. And so we be prepared to decide on. The makeup of the committee, not the individual people, but the, the categories by next time.
Okay. So the next time we decide on the categories, not necessarily the people.
Right.
Great. Thank you.
All right.
Can I just make one more, uh, set of concluding comments here, Mayor?
Yep.
Um, so just to kind of takeaways and wrap ups. So the forum, um. We'll look to schedule out a little bit. It doesn't necessarily need to take place before, but we still want to do it. So I'll put some kind of meat on the bones. Uh, Adrian, you had mentioned maybe like October or something like that, where you get through the back to school kind of a rush. Um, whatever that looks like, I, I can kind of start putting that together, suggest some dates so we have enough lead time to let the public know that that's happening. Um, survey can be live, you know, concurrent, concurrent to the process. So we'll get some good feedback there. Um. The, okay, the brochure. What I'd like to suggest is if, if it's okay with everyone, potentially just having comments from any one of you. Going directly to me on anything you see in there and maybe provide a deadline for that. Would that be appropriate?
Yep. What works for you? One week?
Yeah, I would say would a deadline by, you know, next, next Friday potentially be okay? Enough time for you to directly just contact me with any feedback, edits, refinements, suggestions that you might have.
Now.
Stuff to augment, whatever.
Different people mean different things when they say next. Do you mean Friday, September fifth?
Yeah. Oh, um, I mean a week from this Friday. How about that? Whatever date looks like that.
Good.
So September.
Be the fifth of September. Is that enough time?
Great. Okay. Thanks, everybody, and thanks, Ian. We'll move on to the next, uh. To our scheduled programming.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
I appreciate your inputs. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Tanya. All right. Next up, we have approved the agenda. Um, so everybody. Satisfied with the agenda as proposed. We'll talk about the consent agenda in a moment, but. Hearing, uh, no proposals to change it, I'll consider the agenda approved. Next, we have general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public. To address the council on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. We are, we ask you to raise your hand and limit your comments to five minutes. And I'll see if there's anyone in the room who'd like to be, uh, heard. And I'm see, checking to see if there's anyone. Okay, there's someone in the back who wanted to be heard. Come on up to the front, please.
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Brian Casino, President of Montpelier. Thank you all for your service to the city. I appreciate it. So keep my statement brief here. Um, my statement this evening does fall in line with one of the issues on the agenda this evening of the camping. Policy, however. Uh, sorry.
Yes.
However, there's, there's some pieces that, that are my concerns that I want to bring up that aren't necessarily associated to a policy. And part of this that I want to bring to the council and bring to public in general to start thinking about is. What are we going to do to get some level of consistency and enforcement? That kind of goes with laws that are being broken on a regular basis within these camps. Or around these camps or where these camps move to as they shift around. Uh. It is a consistent issue of drug usage. We have laws for that. There's enforcement for that. Assault, verbal or otherwise, there's laws for that. Right? Yes. Um, so I feel like we're, there's some, a lot of discussion around the encampment issues, homelessness, things of these natures. But there needs to be more of a focus of how do we bring some level of. Responsibility back to the community and safety level for the community members. So I ask you all to take that into consideration. Um, consistent enforcement. And following a simple path of. These are how we are, are going to enforce and keep our citizens safe. And then utilizing, there's a lot of. Capabilities for setting up. Organizations for its decisions, side things to try to come up with ideas. It's all great. But at the end of the day, there are organizations in existence such as Good Samaritan, things like that. That have the, the parts and pieces in place to be able to address some of these issues for folks who want the help. And there it's a lot of organizations, a lot of lot in this state, which is one of the reasons I like. There's a lot of help out there for people who want it. There's a lot of people right now. That show they don't want to be part of this society, don't want to be part of the community and don't necessarily want it. So I just wanted to, as a member of the public, come down here. I made a statement to Ben and Adrian. That I sent via an email because I couldn't, I couldn't make it because, as Adrian was saying earlier, a lot of us have families, kids. A lot of us have families, kids. This is a meeting that happens on six thirty on a school night. This is the first day of school. I wanted my voice heard as a member of the community and come down here and say. A lot of us are tired of it, and a lot of us are tired of not feeling safe to be able to have my family walk to school. My wife and child were harassed on the way to the elementary school the other day to go see their classroom the first time. Enough's enough. I put it out to you all. That is my public statement. I will be attending more of these meetings. And I do appreciate again that you take my, my words into consideration.
Okay, thank you. I will point out that this, I, I let you go on. But this is clearly something that's on the agenda tonight, and so if you're coming to future meetings.
I'll be here for that, that part of the agenda.
Keep that in mind.
My point was enforcement and laws and following some of these things are not camping policy issue. The issues that are happening of open drug use.
Okay, you've made your point, thank you.
Public intoxication, et cetera, assault, that's not camping. That's not where the camp is.
Thank you.
Right? Thank you.
Anybody else? Uh, Zach?
Uh, Zach Hughes, I, uh, I'm just gonna just be quick and I thank the gentleman for his statement. I mean, if it was out of, um, out of the, um, agenda, what agenda? And I hope to still be around when y'all get around to, uh, number ten and eleven. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Anybody else? Uh, Dave Leaning.
Hello. Uh, I don't know if it's on the agenda or not, but last, uh, last week I spoke about, uh. The graffiti and the great job that the Trash Tramps did and cleaning it up. And I just noticed, uh, the other day that some, I, I don't know if you'd call it graffiti, is back in the same spot. But it looks like they painted it on paper, uh, or canvas. And then affixed it to the cement wall as you come over the, uh. Pioneer Street Bridge, and it's a much more inspired effort. I don't know if it rises to the level of art, but I think it's getting close. And, uh, so, uh, somebody's made an impact on whoever, uh, wants to decorate that space. And maybe down the road, uh, there's room to reach out to these budding artists, and I'm being kind. To provide them a contest, a venue, to, uh, have a little fun with what they can do. And they might be more satisfied and less inclined to go out and, uh, hit the cement walls. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave. Anybody else in the room? I don't see anyone else online, so we'll move to the consent agenda. Um, there's a request to pull item G, the capacity study for the Water Resource Recovery Facility. Um, with that removed, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, item G, the capacity study. Kirk, come on up.
Kurt Monica, Director of Public Works. Um, so the, uh, capacity study is an evaluation of, um, it's called the. The biological oxygen demand, so it's the, um, ability of the plant to treat organic matter. Um, so there's two different types of capacity at the wastewater plant. There's the hydraulic capacity, which we have ample hydraulic capacity. The average flow at the plant is about two million gallons a day. We can, uh, we've been up to over ten million gallons a day, so we're not constricted on flow. Um, but we, what we are trying to get a handle on through the study is just how much organics, um, can be treated at the plant. So we take in hauled waste, septic, um, uh, septic tank waste from residential properties. We take in leachate, um, we take other municipalities' solids. And, um, and there's been a request from, um, the local distillery in town, Caledonia Spirits. Um, for the city to allocate more of our organic capacity, so that they can grow. And, um, we're hesitant to, to do that without really getting a really solid understanding. Of what percentage of our capacity we're at. So the last study was done in the early eighties. We've done multiple upgrades at the plant, so we don't think, um, what our rated capacity is at through our permit process is actually accurate. Cause we've made a lot of improvements. Um, but at the same time, there's other competing needs. There's, you know, large housing developments potentially on the rise. And that would use some of that capacity as well. Um, potential growth with leachate receiving. Um, so the, what the point of the study is to look at the impacts of all of the hauled waste, as well as, um, residential waste. And this distillery waste, and see, um, get a better sense of where we're at exactly, on how much growth, uh, we can do at the plant without further upgrades. Um, and then allow us as staff to make better decisions on to, uh, as to where we, um, allow allocations to be, um. Provided to, for growth, whether residential or industrial or otherwise.
And Kirk, could you explain the finances of this?
Yep, so this is, um, through what's called the, uh, State, um, Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund. Uh, so it is a loan, um, but, uh, for each project, uh, design or, um. What they call preliminary engineering report, which this would fall under, um, there is a subsidy from the state of up to a hundred thousand dollars. Um, or fifty percent. So in this case, it's, but the total subsidy is about, um, half of the total contract. Well, it is half of the total contract, so it's about seventy-five thousand. So the city would basically pay half of the contract, the other half would be forgiven. But that loan amount would be forgiven seventy-five thousand.
And being a loan, does that mean it's, is it paid over time, or?
Yep, it's, um, I think it's a one percent interest rate over twenty years.
Okay. Jim?
Why was this brought up now? I mean, you've been, we've been talking about having a lot of housing for quite a while. And you didn't come forward. Is this basically because of the spirits?
That's what really got us thinking about it, because that's a, that's our only really high-strength user. So it has a much bigger impact on the plant capacity than, say, residential growth. Um, because of this concentration of the organics is so much higher.
So if, so what I'm thinking of is, they're talking about it, but they may not do it. So why are we gonna pay upfront if we don't know whether they're gonna do it or not? Because if they don't do it, then we're really, what are we doing this?
Oh, well, I think it's important for, uh, city planning purposes, for, like I said, for multiple reasons, not just for Caledonia Spirits.
Yeah, I know you said that, but you didn't bring this before this, that they said something. I mean, you never brought it. For talking about the housing, so now you're bringing it to talk about the housing? If they don't do it, I mean, it seems to me like their request was what made it come forward. And if they're serious about it, then, you know, why are we doing it just to let them know? I mean, I, I would like to see them maybe pay part of it. I mean, we've already given them a lot of help with the tax stabilization and everything. And, and like I said, if they don't do it, and we're really doing it to see for them. Then, you know, at a time when we're hurting for money, we all know that, and it's gonna be a tough budget year. I just don't wanna see us spend it and have nothing happen, and that, you know. Well, we did it cause we'd like to know, and we didn't really seem to care to know until they put their thing forward. That's all I've got to say about it.
Yeah, well, I'll just, I'll also just point out that we're also, I mean, yes, that request did, um, spur us to pursue a contract. We've been working on this, uh, for probably eight months to get through the state review process, to approve the contract, to approve it for funding. Um, but we're also, um, you know, looking at, and the future council meeting, we'll be coming back to talk about leachate receiving. Um, we are only taking one load a day right now. Um, we can take up to four loads a day. Council has a motion currently that limits us to two, and we're also limited from our UV system. And the UV system's gonna get upgraded in the next project, which will then allow us to take up to four through the UV capacity. But we need to look at the organic capacity as well, so it's, it's really not specific to the Caledonia request. That's kind of what really got us. You know, thinking about this and making it a, a priority for advancing, but, um, there's, it's a much more wide-ranging impact for, uh, for the plant.
And some of these things make money for the city, right?
Yeah, all of these things make money for the city, yeah. The leachate is roughly a hundred thousand dollars, um, per load, um, per day, uh, per year. Per load, yeah. Um, so if we take, you know, four loads a day, it's four hundred thousand annually. If that's one load, we're making a hundred thousand dollar annually.
The Caledonia Spirits contract, we don't even have a contract yet, but that's real money in our pockets too.
That's right, it would increase revenue, and so the study would be paid off over time from revenue from that.
Folks, any other? Adrian?
I mean, this is obvious, but do we have that seventy-six thousand dollars in the budget to pay for this?
So we have a, an engineering line item within the operating budget could cover the debt service.
And again, spread out over twenty years, it's. No, one percent, yep. Is there a motion to approve this? Don't move. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thanks, Kirk. Next up. Dave Belini, if you're still listening, you just, you were just talking about the Trash Tramps. We have a resolution. Uh, proposed resolution. Why, why don't you folks come on up? Why don't you just come on up to the table and I'll have you all, have you all introduce yourselves. Thank you for being here. And I get the suits' last names, though I got you, I'm gonna pop in both suits.
Oh, yes. With consciousness, we've had the four of us and five of the pretty cats are, um, the five people that have been involved in. We've now sitter, um, for the entire ten years that we've been doing this. Um, we have had, as of Tuesdays, um, a hundred seventeen people come to. Uh, pick up litter with us at least once, and the vast majority, many, many, many. Really blessed to have such a great support from, uh, all the tramps. And we also are thrilled to have the support from the senior center for, um, having a place to store all our supplies. And the city has been, uh, very supportive of us as Sue may be, or is, uh, that's creating the best that we're giving. This to us by the city. Um, we also, uh, broke grants for some of Montsoli's manning. Um, so that we could buy some smaller vests that play us, and we also had, um, brand new. And, uh, so. And our career live guest gave us. Fine, uh, brand new long tongs. Um, uh, when I first started doing this, I used. Squirt pong, salad pong, and my, uh, trash jet name was Ben Nova. But because you have a long tongs, now I can do, I have. So, um, the others, others won't. Oh, and anyone, the chance of a lifetime to win, uh, our, uh, first place in the. Two thousand seventeen, um, uh, Fourth of July parade, third of July, um. Where we, uh, got the green award and we got a thousand dollars, which we used to purchase nine sidewalk butters. That you'll find around town. Um, hopefully, um, some of those on listening. So it's been, yeah, but, um, anyway, um, four people who put their butts in. And, uh, we do have, uh, a pair of, uh, tramps that are working to, uh, paint. The cans and, uh, put stickers on that we've been putting around town, uh, for people with butts in. Uh, unfortunately, many people are using them for trash, because, um, we lost so many, uh, uh, trash receptibles. In, uh, flood, that, um, they're even over that, you said, so.
Now, I recall years ago that you were keeping track of the total volume of cigarette butts. Uh, are you still doing that?
Yes, it's the, yes, well, it's the cigarette filtered are recyclable. And they, um, uh, they, there's a company in New Jersey that, uh, cleaned out all the tobacco and paper. And I guess the, uh, filters, the fiberglass filters, uh, it's a little tiny plastic pellet, which they melt and mix with wood fiber. And they press that in. And so we have a long here that sends out all the butts that we collect. Um, and so in the, and so initially, I started measuring them, and that got really old. And, um, I got really good at, um, estimating how many we had collected. In a, in a, on a Tuesday. And, um. You know, I would estimate, and then I would write down the smaller numbers, so I would not be too, just exaggerating. The numbers, and so, um, because of that, we know that we've collected at least a million cigarette butts. That would have gone into the rivers and, uh, leave the rivers and, uh. Any, any butt that lands on the street or on the sidewalk gets washed into, uh, the rivers of when we have rain. And, um, so, um, and we, uh, oh, yeah, yeah, that's right. Okay, our neighbor Joe, uh, was talking to the fishermen, uh, we're down at the Menuski, and they caught a trout. And they opened it up, and there was cigarette, uh, filters in his stomach. So, uh, we're trying to keep the, uh, filters away from the birds and away from the fish. Cigarette butts are number one item, uh, litter in the entire world. And I also read this, I believe, that eighty percent of the pollution in the ocean comes from our rivers. So even though we're this little tiny town and this little tiny river and stuff, it is how we can contribute to, um, the common good.
Well, thank you. I, and there's a resolution, which I'll read and then I'll entertain a motion for someone to, uh, adopt. Whereas, rep, resolution honoring the service of the Trash Tramps. Whereas the City of Montpelier, Vermont honors and recognizes the Trash Tramps. As the embodiment of the city, spirit of public service, who have been in formal operation for ten years. And have faithfully organized litter cleanup in the City of Montpelier every Tuesday afternoon since two thousand ten. And whereas a total of a hundred fifteen different volunteers and two former mayors have tramped with this group throughout their existence. To remove layer, litter and otherwise discarded debris from their Montpelier streets. Improving the appearance and environmental quality of our shared spaces. And whereas the Trash Tramps have removed an estimated total of one million cigarette butts from the streets. Parking lots and sidewalks of Montpelier, the majority of which have been recycled. Thus, decreasing the amount of waste contributed to Montpelier's land, Vermont's landfill from the number one most littered item. And whereas the. And whereas the partnerships with the trance trash tramps have cultivated throughout the years have greatly contributed to their safety and success. Such as being a recipient of two grants from the Central Mount Solid Waste Management District. Which were used to purchase reflective high visibility vests and pickup tongs. And as the winner of Montpelier Alive's July third, two thousand seventeen Parade Contest. Which supported the purchase and installation of full mon- mounted cigarette receptacles throughout the city. And whereas the trash tramps have been featured in articles by WCAX, Seven Days. The Barry Montpelier Times Argus, Vermont Public Radio, The Bridge and WVNY for their extraordinary dedication. And unique service of the community. And whereas the city extends additional acknowledgement and appreciation to the five core trash. Who have served since their establishment. Sanitation Sue, Perky Pickup, Tots for Trash. Candy Rappa and Eileen Dover. Now therefore be resolved that I, Jack McCullough, Mayor of the City of Montpelier. On behalf of the City Council and all citizens of Montpelier. Do hereby express our sincere gratitude and appreciation to the trash tramps and all who have served alongside them. And be it further resolved that the trash tramps decadent service to the city of Montpelier and all who visit be recognized. For their extraordinary dedication and passion for the for our community. Is there a motion? Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So don't go anywhere. All right. Next up. We have a proposal for the parklet waiver for bent nails. Kelly, are you up? In charge of this, are you in, Kurt?
Yeah, uh well, actually, Chris is gonna uh assist with this one. Um he's been working with Bent Nails on um. Just uh looking at their structure um and just reviewing the process that they did follow. Um in this particular instance, um Bent Nails uh did apply um to the Design Review Committee. To put up their structure. They do not complete the process through the city manager's office. Um and so we're trying to work with them to bring them into compliance and then get them sort of a. A waiver of sorts that they can keep their parklet. Um so Chris is gonna go over the details with you. There are details in your packet. Um and I don't know if there's a member from uh Bent Nails Bistro online. They thought they might be able to call in there. You know, doing um their dinner thing, so they they weren't able to be here if they're not here. Um they did sort of. Want to attend if they could. Um so I'm gonna turn it over to Chris to provide some of the details in terms of, you know, what he's reviewed and what he's seen. And then um just sort of an itemized list of uh potential waivers that you could consider for them.
Good evening, Chris Lombra, Sustainability Facilities Coordinator. So uh like Kelly said, Bent Nails went through design review. Um for their parklet about a year ago. And they believe that that completed the application process and did not. Um go through the city manager's application process. Um criteria listed um in the managers off um application. Um the 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 biggest one that they can't comply with or they're not in compliance with is that. The business have one or more public on-street parking space in front of their business. Um since parklets can be used as an accessory structure for nearby business or businesses. Not used for standalone place of business. They're in compliance with that. Um shall not unreasonably impede delivery and curbside pickup locations for other nearby businesses. This was flagged by Chief Nordensen in his his review of this. Um the amount of disruption is is somewhat subjective on this, but. Um the the parklet does exist in a no parking zone in front of Bent Nails Bistro instead in case anyone hasn't been by to see it. That is a a delivery spot. Um. Shall not be in a space that will interfere with the ability of emergency services to provide effective response to buildings. And to order the parklet in the event of an emergency. Um I've had a discussion with with Chief Libby about this. And he's had the duty crew go over with with their truck. Um and they were able to back into that end of Langton Street in case the the mouth of Langton Street was obstructed. Um it's not not entirely ideal, but it's doable. So there is minimum impact there, I would say. And. Thank you. Um shall not be in a space that, in the opinion of city staff, will be in an unsafe location. Um due to the presence of turning vehicles or other considerations and it's. It does impede into kind of the swing to turn right on the Elm Street from the end of Langton Street, but there. There's probably enough room to make that turn as well. Um. Parklet shall preserve access to public and private utilities such as manhole covers and shut-off valves. And I don't believe there's any structures underneath this parklet. Um maintain a one-foot setback from the boundaries of the parking space, not in a parking space, so we're out of compliance with that. Park it parklet shall be ADA accessible and it is reasonably flush with the curb so that. A person that uses mobility devices could easily access it. Oh, and that that's addressed in one of the one of the details of this, a half-inch gap maximum between parklet floor and curb. Um design shall ensure good traffic and pedestrian visibility, especially near crosswalks and intersections. Um they currently do not have reflective signage on this, but that would be a requirement of this this structure if it gets a waiver. Parklet shall be attractive attractive enough to attract an historic character. Um and this this was addressed by DRC. This this uh particular parklet is made of lumber, pressure treated lumber. And parklets must follow river hazard regulations, which it has. Um. Wow, and so here's here's one that's uh. It does not, okay, I'm sorry, Mike, thank you. Um parklet shall maintain paths of water drainage from centerline road and along the curb to any storm drain inlet. And it it does currently obstruct the the water flow along the curb, so that would have to be modified in some way. Um. Shall enhance the pedestrian experience downtown by providing places for activities on the commercial streets of the city. Amenities uh such as light speakers, umbrellas and the like shall be provided and used in such a manner as to enhance the experience. Of those using the parklet. But those all up, but also those passing by. So the the issues with it is that it does it does currently block the gutter. Um it's not adequately anchored against flotation. It's missing visible signage. And um I was mistaken about the fact that there was not a river hazard permit in place for this. I thought. That had gone along with DRB, but my bad. Um. So um and then in the in the lead up to this, we had discussion mainly by email. Among um public safety, public works, interested parties. Um and a few things were flagged on there, and I think they're on the cover sheet as well, that um. It's not twenty feet from the crosswalk and while I didn't go over and measure it, it's it's. Very close to being twenty feet from the crosswalk. It doesn't show well in the picture that's that was attached to that email. Um so it could be maybe shifted. Less than a foot if if anything, and I will go measure that and make sure. It does block the gutter. It does have some impact on deliveries, at least to Bent Nail Bistro. Oh. And yeah, Chief Chief Libby's been over with the with the big truck and it's. Again, not ideal, but it it is accessible and not cause for extreme alarm on his part. Uh it is in a no parking zone. And um so the um. From my view, when I went over there and and what led me to suggest Bent Nails apply for a a waiver if possible. Um there's there's three kind of key mitigating factors in. In this case. The the biggest one being that um Bent Nails does not have a street front parking space in front of their space. They. It was suggested by staff that maybe they could move it around a corner to Elm Street, but after having conversations with the owners of the property. That just puts them in a terrible spot with with liquor compliance, right? They're they're serving alcohol to people that they can't monitor their behavior and it's just. That's a no-go. Um. Uh another mitigating factor is the fact that it's it's Langton Street, right? It's a one-way street traffic. Traffic is already constricted by the bridge. Cars creep through there. It's not. There's not, in my mind, there's not the danger of a high-speed vehicle impact, like there might be some other location in town. Uh third mitigating factor is that there the waiver is really only for six weeks and it it would be one and done and we would not do this again next year. Questions?
So your proposal, your recommendation is to grant the waiver?
With with the corrections I noted, yes.
So they would have they'd be required to.
You know, would you like me to listen?
Yeah, they'd be required to attach it to the to the road to the road somehow.
They would have to anchor it against flotation, whether it's attached to the road or to concrete blocks or or some other suitable.
Uh huh.
Method, and I think that would be addressed in the in the river hazard permit. Is that right, Mike?
Yeah.
Yep, thank you. Um it would have to be trimmed or or modified to allow water to flow down the gutter. And it would need visible signage. So with with those guests out.
Does the anchoring satisfy all of the river hazard requirements for the parklet? Is that the only requirement that is needed anchoring?
I can't speak to the classification. Um and so Meredith would be the first to approve it. But that's the primary one that's.
Can we assume, Chris, that you're gonna like work with them to help them?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I I would be comfortable moving that we grant this waiver.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, I think I think the parklet program in general has been really good for the city. Doing something to make make it work for these folks and making sure they work we work them to. Comply next year. Great idea. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
All right. Item eight, country club road lease uh to the hub. Um. We'll have discussion and then I anticipate we're going into executive session.
So we have members from the hub here who are gonna give a brief presentation. Um while they're getting set up, I'm just gonna give a quick. Summary of where we're at. Um and then they'll give their presentation. Um. So uh what we have here before us tonight um are the lease terms with the hub um for. Recreational services um at that location. And so um what I just wanted to kind of brief you on is where we ended up. We've been working with them um to bring this forward. So you'll recall back in March, uh we had an RFP uh that RFP was awarded on April twenty fourth. Um along with an award to Turtle Island, we've already um concluded the terms of that lease. We started. With Turtle Island first, just knowing that we needed to kind of get it up and running um for this current uh fall season. Um and the hub was kind enough to sort of gracious enough to allow them to go first, so that then we can take up their terms next. Um so once we settled with Turtle Island, uh which was in June, we then started with the hub um with a. A increased level of intensity, so uh we were working through that with them. Um and just some of the things that I wanted to. Note, based on sort of the RFP, just to um provide a summary, uh is we were really looking for. A partner with um experience, collaboration, and we were just wanting to make sure that there was the the financial capacity to do. Um uh recreation uh opportunity up at that uh location. Um and so what I want to do is just go over brief terms and then they're gonna um provide um a presentation for you. So this um lease as proposed is really in three segments. Um the first is sort of for the building, um which is a phased approach. Um so the first phase would include about sixteen hundred square feet would be for ten years or two five-year extensions. Um it would bring in approximately twenty one thousand dollars annually or thirteen dollars per square feet. This is consistent with the Turtle Island lease. Um there would also be payment for utilities um at two dollars and thirty cents per square feet. Foot, we would true that up um as we go along in the lease with the intention of being net neutral. There are parking spaces included. Uh there's also um the inclusion of maintenance and cleaning of common area bathrooms provided by the hub. Um that duty would be transferred to the city should be open those restrooms um up to the public. Um the second part of this building lease is phase two, where the old bar space was. Um. They would give us a thousand dollars for an annual option on this lease. Um for two years, so there'd be two individually one-year terms. And a second year, if the city um had determined that there would be utilization of that space, then we could potentially um. Talk about about maybe using that space for city use. Um and then there's also uh right of first refusal on the function room and sort of the old kitchen space. The second portion um of the three different items is a um option to. Lease an acre and a half of land to the right of the building. Um and so for that, the hub would. Uh give the city fourteen thousand dollars to exercise that option um for five years. Um expiring on the first of September twenty thirty. Um and there would be an option to extend for an additional five-year term at fourteen thousand dollars. Uh the third item is if they were to exercise this um lease option, the hub uh. Would enter into an agreement with the city for a first term of thirty-five years. For an additional thirty years, the base front would be five thousand dollars while they were constructing at Sports Barn um at this point. And they'll probably get into the details, um so I don't want to steal their thunder too much, um but it would be for, you know, a two-bay tennis uh court. Uh situation. Um once they had constructed the building, there would be twelve thousand dollars for each year. With an annual increase increase of two to four percent dependent on CPI. Um. And permitted use is identified as indoor tennis noted and outdoor activities. There would be an option to lease the land following or lease to purchase um following the terms. Um what I do want to note is with the ground lease, we there are a few items that we would still want to. Work through just to kind of fine tune a little bit. Um and so for tonight, really what we're looking at is. All of these leases, taking this information and um and considering where you want to go with it. Um if you should decide that you do want to advance, um we are currently um running this through legal counsel. As it stands, and so we would probably do a final review and bring those cleaned up lease terms to you at the next meeting on the tenth of September. Um so with that, I'm gonna hand it over to the hub. Um and have them give their presentation and then following their presentation, um as the mayor mentioned, we'll enter executive session.
Give the option to ask questions, they have the presentation.
Yes.
Okay, uh. I'm Nat Winthrop. I think you all know me. I'm now Chair of the Hub. Um. I first of all want to thank Kelly sincerely. Uh we we've been meeting uh weekly at least for a full three months now. Um. The building lease that Kelly referred to is modeled on the Turtle Island lease. So the terms are largely consistent with that lease that you've already approved. I also want to thank the other department heads who participated in most of these meetings. That includes Arnie. That includes Arnie McMullin, Mike Miller, Chris Lumbras. And also Amy from the Senior Center and Alex from Parks. So all told, there've been. You know. Probably a hundred hours that we've been spending on. Negotiating these leases and also the five year option. And I also want to thank the folks at Turtle Island. Working with them on the RFP proposal was a delight, really. And we really look forward to sharing the existing clubhouse building with them. We recently changed our name. We are now the Community Sports Hub. No. And. We're registered with the Secretary of State's office. You can still refer to us as the hub for shorthand, but as we're the Community Sports Hub. We are a nonprofit. As you all know, we've been. Following. The public input process with. Consultants. Over the past three years. And we've been in discussions with the city for more than three years. We are, our board members are all local. And we're all community minded. Volunteers. Who have spent hundreds and hundreds of hours on getting the project to this point. Over the past four years. And our mission on the screen is to provide a safe. Vibrant, equitable and inclusive space for intergenerational leisure activities. And recreational programs that enhance and promote. The social and physical well being of central Vermont residents. Now John will provide a little historical. Brief historical context.
John Ray Hill, and I've been working on this from the. The start for the last four years or so. This is the overview of your fabulous piece of property, hundred and thirty four acres. This was obviously not in the summer and the. This is the Elks building, this white square and the white. Rectangle would be phase one and phase two of our proposed hub building. And the green around it, which allows us to build it and maintain it. It would be the acre and a half out of the hundred and thirty four we do it for a land lease on. Okay. We, when we first proposed this idea, this was, we were believing on the land. And we, he said, sure, we can. We can share facilities in the Elks Club and you can, we'll lease you this land. We showed it to the city and they got pretty excited about it. They were planning wrestling with the Elms, with the Barry Street facility, but also planning a new facility down. By the tennis courts, swimming pool. And when they saw this, they certainly saw some of the advantages of this site. And. We, we. So soon thereafter, they. Well, we talked a little bit about sharing and not duplicating uses. We, their facility that they had very preliminary drawings on had one tennis court. And we said, well, we're going to do tennis courts then, no problem, the city did a tennis court. So we agreed that we should, we would do better if we cooperated than if we tried to duplicate. We supported the bond because we didn't want to run the whole site and we thought that would be great. It's an amazing piece of property. And we had our two hundred tennis members, first and fitness at the time. We rallied and said, you're going to get behind this. This thing is got real potential. We were thrilled that the bond vote passed and soon thereafter. The city put out an RFP for a master plan, which is, which was the right thing to do. And Whiten Burke was hired and went through an extensive process of getting public input. On various aspects of what are we going to do with this, this piece of property? The two sheets on the left are. Out of the final report, but one of the things that they got input on is since it's, it's a property that has. You know, a lot of acreage, what should we do there? Should it be housing? Should it be recreation or should it be a mix? And. They voted, they had, you know, votes and tallies and whatnot, and the winning idea, supported by the majority of the public, was to have a mix. What I wanted to show you here was that in all of the options, which. Considered recreation. The buildings, the indoor facilities, all centered around the existing Elks building in all the options. So one of these was represented our thoughts on where the hub would be. And we were talking with the rec department about what their needs and how they might also be part of this hub. That was, or you had a single entrance and could go here or there. So we've been very consistent about. About our plans and, and. There is lots of consideration for. The idea of putting them all down in the beginning was sort of codified by that process. This is a close up of that area with the dotted line. You see the dotted line is our acre and a half. And this is phase one. We, lots happened in four years and not all the good. The interest rates have not gone down. The costs between then and now have about doubled. So our, our. Three million dollar. Forecourt facility is now cut in half so we can afford to do it. The grant climate, as you all know, is not favorable and doesn't look favorable. So we've got a challenge to do, but we think that getting a start on it is, is when it were fun. So this is. This is a rendering we did a long ago of our forecourt facility. They say it'll now be a two, but our idea really is to sort of replace the first and fitness. Tennis. Facility that was in Berlin. That four years ago, they just sold the green mountain and they had a different business plan. And we realized right away that we're going to, we're going to be losing. This wonderful opportunity during the winter that we're going to have to make plans for something else. So what we would be doing here is really replacing that facility. Very large size. With a similar facility, but bringing up the Montpelier. One of the things that, that people should know is the tennis is thriving nationally, growing faster than it's ever grown. And. You know, Montpelier has a wonderful program and spot. In the summer, people have seen that the young kids playing tennis outside, it's a joy. The high schools are missing very much the ability to get a head start on their seasons. And that's really had a negative impact on the. On the attendance of these, these sports teams, which is really sad. Barry is, I think they dropped their tennis team. And if you can't practice before the first match. It's hard to compete and Montpelier and U thirty two have been very competitive in the past. So it's our high schools are really clamoring for this. And this building would be for more than tennis. It would be for youth clinics. It would capital. We had a lot of discussion with Capital Soccer, which is still using the little, the single court they have now. Up at first, up at Green Mountain, but that's going to shrink. We were down to the point of deciding when, what part of the day Capital Soccer would. Use it and trying to work that out to help us pay for it. And we were talking about how to try to get a turf material on the, on the floor that would suit them as well. And we actually think we found one up in Canada that might. Serve more than just tennis. This is a rendering we did some time ago, but after we partnered with Turtle Island, their. Parking lot's wrong in the sense that now Turtle Island is going to take that space. And use it for their own outdoor activities, which we think is going to be great. But that gives you an idea of the scale of the, of the building. Inside the old Elks building, our plan is to. Provide a virtual sports or a sports simulator center. And I don't know what that is, never been in one, but. Others have, have, and we think it's going to be a moneymaker. We heard from the Central Vermont Community Development. Association that two other parties last year had sought. To come to Central Vermont, providing business plans. And they all look very profitable. So our goal is to try to help pay for the sports barn. And whereas this started as a golf simulator. The software is, it's really improved apparently and now includes hockey. Baseball, soccer, cornhole, frisbee and other target sports. So apparently somebody is a center, you do what you're going to do with your swinging and. And then your friends heckle you in this sitting area in back. And apparently there, it's quite popular. So this is, this is good for, for all ages and. It gives people a chance to hone their skills in the cold season.
And there's no. Indoor tennis or simulated sports anywhere in Central Vermont.
This is a picture of the Elks Club and the bottom, you would approach from the bottom. So the purple is Turtle Island. They're taking the larger space. The blue is the hub and the left hand half is our first phase. The second hand is our, the second half of that light blue would be the expansion. First phase would be creating two sport, virtual sports bays. And it includes a snack bar, which is going to be small at the beginning, but. We think it's going to be a huge addition to that. That to anybody who's up there and it would serve not only people at the virtual sports, but. The. Cross Nordic skiers, the frisbee people, Turtle Island, parents of. Staff have said, oh, good, we would frequent that. And so we think it's a small addition, but going to be a real. Positive addition. The white area, the left hand side. Is, as Kelly said, the city talked about wanting to reserve a place presence up there, which would be great. And so that is city space. This is the showers that. Were recently built and those hopefully will be put into use. And this is the. Existing bathroom, which we have offered to both maintain and patrol, which is a biggie. Because the city doesn't want to be in the business of keeping the public out. So we would have people coming through our space in order to use the bathroom. But we think it's going to, that snack bar is going to be a great addition to the. Activity up there. One of the things that I think is going to be nice is that daycare is obviously an early in the day. Activity and in the short term, this is going to be a much longer into the evening. Activity and when the sports barn is, is off to the right, that's also going to extend the activity at that facility. Much, you know, through the day and evening. And there's nothing better than having it busy. I go back to this close up. The. One thing's been fun is that there's been a lot of ideas for, you know, oh, you're building a building, how about? And not only talking to Capital Soccer long ago, but recently there's been interest in putting a rock climbing wall inside, which we think will be. Fairly easy, won't take up my space. And. We think any activity is good activity that brings more people to here. And I should say that none of these things that we're considering either. Are in conflict or limit what the city is going to do. We would look forward to the time when the city decides. What they need to. Have for enclosed space, but this doesn't preclude any of that, be it downtown, and this has been discussed about showing downtown or not. This. Is not going to duplicate and it would just start via a way to start some activity up there. Even the area outside. The building, you know, during the first phase, there'd be some area here that isn't used and there's a little area there. There've been some ideas for shuffleboard, platform tennis, maybe some golf practice cages. And we think that those are small things, but it would have a big impact. All adding vitality to this site in the recreation part. Montpelier has amazing summer rec facilities, but is definitely lacking in winter facilities. You don't play hockey or ski. So our focus is really to try to get that year round recreation center going.
Okay. So the benefits to the city. We will be paying rent starting soon if these leases are approved. We intend to open the simulated sports operation. Early winter, this winter, this calendar year. And then. Kelly mentioned we're paying fourteen thousand dollars for the option to later. Enter into a land lease for one and a half acres. And assuming we exercise that option, she also mentioned. We'll be paying a thousand dollars a month to start plus regular increases year by year after that. So. It's a. Revenue generator for the city and there is zero cost to taxpayers. John's mentioned that our mostly indoor activities. Will not compete with any facilities or amenities that the city offers. And we will continue consulting with and communicating with the rec department to make sure that we're not duplicating each other's efforts. We're also open to the public. We will have memberships, but people are welcome to play either tennis or virtual sports. On a daily basis and will be offering discounted passes to the city rec department. For them to pass along to low and middle income city residents. John mentioned the snack bar. We currently are talking to Vince and Vanya Marag. I think they may be online if you have any questions of them. They used to run the hippie chickpea on Elm Street before they got flooded out. Um, they used to run the hippie chickpea on Elm Street before they got flooded out. And they intend to provide a sort of grab and go selection of healthy foods and non-alcoholic beverages uh, up there as soon as we open the simulated sports operation. Uh, in the long term, it's their hope, just as it was with Three Penny Tap a couple of years ago, to eventually uh, expand and have a full service restaurant that will service all the new residents who uh, inhabit the housing up there.
Our, our schedule uh, is as Nat says, we're gonna start with the uh, virtual golf, uh, virtual sports renovations. Um, and we have quite a challenge ahead of us in terms of fundraising and getting grants, as you can imagine. Um, this allows this approval of our option for the land lease will allow us to start in earnest and we can say to people, we have a, we have a lease, so you've been, this actually is gonna happen. We're not, we're not just talking about something uh, theoretical. Um, that's gonna be a couple of years down the road to complete that effort in a tough climate. And uh, we we are, we definitely realize it's gonna be a challenge.
Um, that's why we need the five-year option before we actually sign the land lease. And there will be opportunities to amend the land lease and it will come before the city council if and when we exercise that option.
I think that is uh, uh, that's sort of a summary where we're excited about uh, what we're doing. And it's a small, small part of what was a much more exciting uh, longer term vision, but it's a tough climate, as you know, for uh, the city to be asking the taxpayers some things. So I think this is gonna be even more uh, important to be able to start something uh, than it might have been a couple of years ago. So we're excited about it, we're trying, we're excited about starting some uh, availability of recreation for young people and people of all ages, and uh, we're looking for your support.
Thank you. Uh, if you could unshare your screen so we could all see each other, I don't know if you.
I don't know how to do that.
Thanks, everyone, but you would. Okay, so. All right, let her give her eyes a second to get reacclimated.
Wake up.
Um, council members, do we have any thoughts or any questions? Or Kelly, do you have anything to add at this point? Go ahead, Ben.
Yeah, man, I have a question.
Yeah.
I'll go for it. Um, well, first, I just wanna say thank you. Like, I know how long you have been working on this and the hours that you've been putting into it and really appreciate that. You know, I think as I told you before, the kind of two ways that I think about this really is, um, you know, this is a city investment and we need to steward it well. And so what I'm looking for, you know, is the lease, are the lease terms advantageous to the city? Uh, what is the benefit that provides? And I, and I do recognize obviously the benefit of outdoor or of recreation, so I appreciate that. Uh, but also it's important that we have confidence in the financial viability of the thing that we signed the lease for. Um, and so that's kind of where I'm coming from and the kind of questions that I'm asking. So the first question that I have, and I promise I'll try to go real quick, but like, the first one is just, have you done or had a professionally completed market analysis um, to determine the viability of this business model?
No, we conducted a survey of two hundred uh, former tennis members at the Person Fitness Facility some years ago. And uh, something like eighty percent of them said they would take out a membership and even consider uh, investing in equity. Before you get to your other question, I forgot to introduce another member with that you'll show. Why don't you come up and join us? Uh, he is a lawyer, he's on our board. His day job is with the uh, Sierra Club. And um, he can answer any questions related to he also participated in the negotiations with the city. And uh, he spent in close touch with another lawyer who specializes in real estate that helped draw up the leases. Go ahead, Ben.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about other kind of rec centers that I've seen, like, for example, just thinking about like in Linenville, where there's a group trying to build a ice hockey facility or renovate an ice hockey facility. And I know that they worked with USDA Rural Development to pursue funding to do a market analysis that just looked region wide at, you know, what the draw is. Um, the second thing is just in the business plan, which I appreciate, appreciated. It felt like a a large part of the of the plan is is predicated on grants, right? Um, and it is a really challenging grant environment. But in particular, I'm just thinking about Northern Borders Regional Commission, which is mentioned in the business plan and the idea that, you know, my understanding from Northern Borders is that they are unlikely to fund two Northern Borders Regional Commission grants in at one site. And I know that the city is also pursuing a Northern Borders Regional Commission grant for this site. And so uh, it would be difficult to approve something if there was, I mean, I, yeah, it would be difficult to want to move forward with something that would jeopardize the city's prioritization of that grant.
We uh, were asked by Northern Borders to submit a application for a one hundred thousand dollar feasibility study grant, the deadline of which is this Friday, day after tomorrow. Uh, we had a Zoom conference with them last week where they continued to encourage us. We asked them about the possible conflict with a possible city grant application and to follow up, they did not uh, know whether the city was planning to do that or the CCR property as opposed to downtown. Um, so then I followed up with Mike Miller and he just emailed me back on Monday saying that indeed the city is planning to apply for a uh, uh, infrastructure grant for the Country Club Road property in the current grant cycle. So when we found that out, we checked back with Christie Farnham and Elizabeth and Heather, the other people on the call. And they all told us that uh, yeah, you're right, if the city is applying, uh, there's no point in you doing so in this grant cycle. So again, that's why we negotiated the five-year option period. Cause as long as the current administration is in the White House, uh, we think uh, it's a long shot that we're gonna get grants uh, that stem like Northern Borders does from federal funding, also USDA, also H U D, uh, all of which we've looked into. Um, this, the way we've structured it, it gives us in the city a chance to revisit this in three to five years. Um, like I said before, we can renegotiate the terms of the land lease at that time, should you approve the option. Um, and in the meantime, we plan some short-term uh, facilities, both indoor and outdoor. Uh, and everybody will have a chance to look at how we're doing there. Our business plan shows positive cash flow by either year two or year three from the simulated sports. And uh, we will continue to seek uh, congressionally designated uh, allocations through all three of the congressional offices. But we realize that there's gonna be a lot of competition there. So uh, but we're not only relying on grants, we're also relying on large loans and uh, we've been talking to the Vermont Community Foundation as well as the Community National Bank and Northfield Savings Bank and are confident that uh, they see this as a very community uh, focused project. Um, and uh, said that they would definitely consider million dollar plus loans. Um, we're not gonna only rely on loans, we're also gonna do, uh, you know, corporate, apply for corporate grants and have a vigorous fundraising effort just in the community. Um, Ethan Atkin and I got uh, either checks or pledges totaling a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in a two-month period back in twenty twenty-one before the city announced that it was gonna be on the March twenty-two uh, town meeting ballot. So uh, we're well connected in the community and we intend to launch a fundraising effort within the next year, which our goal will be to raise a minimum of a half million and hopefully a lot closer to a million dollars in private finance.
I would say that's a chance too, we realize that, but we're not gonna go ahead. And we, you know, we're letting it.
Yeah.
Do it. So we, we appreciate your concern, but we don't get a chance to get that, so.
I understand, and I just, I have like one more question, uh, folks, I'm sure have questions as well. Just on the fundraising component, that you folks are currently, the hub is a five oh one C seven private club or fraternal organization. Is the plan to become a five oh one C three or to stand up a separate kind of like friends of the hub, five oh one C three, that you would be raising those tax deductible donations through? And I'm just, I'm not a tax attorney, but I'm curious about the relationship between five oh one C three and five oh one seven and the IRS and how they think about that.
Um, similar to the grant situation, the IRS has been significantly downsized under the Trump administration. Uh, we have been advised that uh, the five oh one C seven's designation sort of fits like a glove for us, whereas it would be a long shot to get five oh one C three status. As you know, the, we have to fit it under one of several categories. We are looking at doing that and we do plan to submit an application for a five oh one C three. In the meantime, we are, because the Montpelier Foundation, as you know, Ben, uh, is said they don't have the staff capacity to continue serving as our fiscal sponsor. So we're now in discussions with Downstreet Housing uh, to become our fiscal sponsor. Uh, and of course, they also have an interest in that property uh, in terms of being one of several developers for housing or affordable housing.
Thank you.
Adrian.
Um, can you explain just in like very elementary terms? Um, so between now and we had twenty twenty-eight in here in terms of like potential shovel, shovel ready and, you know, raising enough money. So to twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-eight in the lease, you talked about like the five-year land lease, like what does that mean? So in terms of like the city, like so you don't raise enough money by twenty twenty to start building the sports barn? Like what, I just, I need to understand, like, in a kindergarten manner, like what does that mean? For the city.
You know, it's a five-year option to enter into a thirty-five-year land lease that would then be renewable for another thirty years. Um, and if we are unable to get, have a financing in place within five years, we have the option to buy time if we put up another fourteen thousand dollars for the same acre and a half for an additional five years. However, it is our hope, I mean, we're most, uh, half the people on the board are gonna be in their early seventies or even eighties in five-year time. We are looking to, we're doing this not for ourselves, we're doing it for our kids' generation and generations of our grandchildren and great-grandchildren. We see, we see this as a long-term benefit for the city. I don't know if that answers your question.
Can I just ask a follow-up?
Yeah.
So um, you know, one of the opportunities, I think, so one, first of all, thank you. I think recreation is, you know, my, one of my big, you know, um, you know, causes here in Montpelier. I think recreation is gonna be very important over the next five, ten years as, you know, the world changes and um, you know, local recreation is gonna be very important. Um, and having these indoor opportunities. And there's nothing more that I've seen that got people riled up in Montpelier than this proposal. I got so many emails today, both pros and cons. I mean, it was wild to see the discussions out there that, you know, you never know what gets Montpelierites engaged, this is it. And so um, just kind of sharing some of the questions that I have received and we've heard, we've heard some of these, you know, concerns about tennis and, you know, not, you know, sharing the values of, you know, the Montpelier community and and being exclusive and and um, you know, having other opportunities besides tennis. And I did hear you say that you did talk to Capital Soccer and having, exploring some type of turf down there. So I think, one, I'd like to hear a little bit more about that. And I know that we've, I've talked to you a little bit about a rock climbing gym. Um, I am working with a group and we're doing tons of research around rock climbing here in Central Vermont. And I would love for there to be, just within that five-year period, to look at opportunities to partner with these organizations, to make your business plan more diverse in your offering, so that we can accommodate the needs of Montpelier residents, as you said, for your grandchildren, right? The next generation that's coming behind. So, you know, what if tennis does not take off and, you know, my children and their children aren't interested in tennis, right? So they might be interested in rock climbing, they might be interested in soccer. So I think the more you diversify that space, the more, the more longevity that sports barn will have. Um, and I think the investment will go farther and I think our community will be more engaged in that conversation, which would then help you in your fundraising. So I think it all, just having people understand that you are looking at partners and that um, there are conversations that are happening beyond just tennis. Cause I think people are like hyper focused on that. Um, so if you just wanna just share a little bit about what that may look like and maybe some opportunities, just so people that, you know, listen to this, kind of understand the the full scope.
John mentioned before that we had several meetings a couple of years ago with Capital Soccer and they were quite interested in the space. It would work better for that if it were a four-court sized building than a two-court uh, in terms of indoor. Obviously, there's uh, significant outdoors stuff that are happening already. And uh, that will continue and will be available for intramural sports, a limited number of hours a week. Uh, soccer being one example, lacrosse being another. Um, and also for concerts and other community events. Um,
Well, one of the things that we talked about, talking with the rec department or early on was uh, looking at their planning facility, they had a walking track. And that's a wonderful idea. Uh, it makes our building bigger, it wouldn't be that much more expensive, but when we uh, when we pour to make it bigger on ourselves, that's a question that would be a wonderful use. And we, and they also um, expressed interest in a curb component. Uh, basketball, we're not really accommodating basketball very well. They're not gonna put a pool in there and some other things to third. But um, the more this building you, the better. And we're excited about the game they started and uh, and we can build mushroom as people. Uh, we didn't do that.
Yeah, one thing we've discussed with both Arnie and Kelly is the possibility over the Yeah, one thing we've discussed with both Arnie and Kelly is the possibility over the next five to ten years. You know very well that the city wanted to put a community center or a new rec building up there to replace the one on Mary Street. We are very open to uh submitting joint grant proposals to federal agencies to be able to. Build something at least twice as big as what we were showing in our presentation. Uh, so. That option is available.
Ben, do you have another question?
I have one more.
Oh. Go ahead, Ben.
Uh, uh, one quick question, maybe while we were talking about other things. Uh, we said something about it, but I just wanna make a clarification. Um. Kelly can also answer, will this initiative will be paying tax? Well, because you are nonprofit uh organization, there will be no tax is coming to the city. So my other question will be the Montpelier residents paying for this initiative through their taxes or. Uh, we will get some tax from you.
As I said before, we're paying the city in a number of different ways. My impression, but it's really a question for Kelly or Mike. Uh, my impression is that we will not be paying property tax.
Um, and thank you for your uh patience. I know that it has been taking, I don't know, almost four years. So you've been coming and like uh going back, doing other uh studies, uh so I really appreciate your uh patience sometimes. Things really get longer than we expected. Thanks.
Ben.
Just, yeah, yeah, I wanna echo that. I get how long you've been working on this and that these projects take a really long time and that they're hard. Um. One of the questions, I mean, I think probably the biggest concern I have actually is the opportunity cost to the city through the the option. Um, you know, that it's a five-year option for fourteen thousand dollars with the opportunity to renew after five years for another fourteen thousand dollars. And if I read it correctly, the option is transferable to another entity controlled or designated by the hub. And so I guess what I worry about is the idea that you folks try as hard as you can to make this thing happen. But there is a scenario in which for nine years we're waiting for it to happen and the city will have received twenty-eight thousand dollars for that. Right? And so, you know, thinking about like an RFP is going out presumably this fall to developers around what's gonna happen with the rest of this country club road site. To me, it's like that commitment is a nine-year, I mean, essentially it could be a nine or ten-year commitment for twenty-eight thousand dollars to sit back and let some prime real estate. Not be developed. And that's a concern I have. So the question I have is, is there some scenario in which you continue to move forward with this plan? Without that option and agreement. I've heard you say like, it's gonna be so much easier to raise funds if we can say, we've got this option, we've got this land locked in, now we just need the money, but. You know, is there a scenario in which you go out there and raise money for this hub that is like sight agnostic? That just says, you know, hopefully it works out here, but if not, we're gonna build this facility.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
We've been working on this hard.
Yeah.
For four years.
Yeah.
And uh if you all turn it down, it's gonna be, you know, a huge blow to us. And we'll basically have to. Start out, start from scratch, start all over again. In terms of the opportunity, it's an opportunity for the city. It's an opportunity to get something started up there where virtually nothing has gone on. Well. There have been a couple of things, but uh not a lot has gone on since you purchased the property. Uh, three, fully three years ago. There is Nordic skiing, there's been. To, there's the community garden, there's dog walkers, uh, but this is a chance to really. Get something started that. Will benefit Montpelier residents pretty much right away and for the next several years. Um.
Because of what we're gonna do, we're now. Our main focus is to, we, the sports barn, we're local, but we certainly, you know how hard it is to create money and whatnot, so. Uh, we don't wanna be unrealistic, well, probably again.
Yeah.
Um, but we need that to be able to raise money, not gonna be able to raise money.
We need site control.
Right, I, I, that's my question. Do you need site control? Right, okay.
And it's that lot, it's that so many positive assets for motion, you know, you being part of other rec facilities that have the. Show that uh it really essential.
Karen, then. Karen and Adrian.
Thank you. Um, so I have a question that's kind of combining points that both Palin and Ben were making and um gets to. Um, you you may not be able to answer this, this may be a question that Kelly or or somebody else may be able to answer, but I'm thinking about. The the relationship between um an organization that builds a building and owns it and. Does not own the land underneath it. The city maintains ownership of the land. And so I'm 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 concerned about. Risk, um, just as Ben is concerned about opportunity, loss, I'm concerned about another scenario where. You start to build it and then two years later, it's it's not a go and you and you can't do it and you leave. Or what happens to the building then? And what is the, you know, who who takes care of it? Who who tears it down? Who turns it into something else? Um, and then also linked to the question about taxes. I'm I'm a little unclear how property taxes work when you own the building, but you don't own the land under it. So I mean, we do, we do uh assess property taxes on the land and the building. So I'm thinking that, you know, the land, since we own the land, there will be no property tax assessed on that. But the building under typical circumstances, I think, would be subject to property tax. Is is that, and I'm not asking in these circumstances, but if it's a, you know, just somebody else, a for-profit company or somebody. That would be subject to property tax, right?
If it were for profit.
If it were for profit, yeah. Okay, and so I think we got it's um. The any nonprofit designation or not any nonprofit designation gets you out of paying municipal property taxes. So the five oh one C seven makes you exempt from federal taxes. But it does not make you exempt from local property taxes. There, you have to be a, what is it, a pious, public or charitable organization to qualify for property tax exemption. And so I'm I'm not saying one way or the other, which way it would go, but it's definitely not guaranteed. That you wouldn't have to pay property tax. Um, that's definitely something for you to. Consult with a lawyer about, for you to talk with the BCA about. I, as a member of the BCA, I don't think that you would qualify for that exemption. Um. So that's just something to keep in mind. And so that kind of, yeah, okay.
That's that's all I have to say.
Adrian, so something?
Yeah, I was just trying to, um, I know I've read the lease and all the paperwork, but you might have missed on the topic, but so what is the, um, what are we charging for rent for the? Existing building? That's one question. I'll stop there. Is it a thousand dollars a month?
So no, so um, so what what I sort of presented earlier was sort of the annualized costs associated with that. So um it's about twenty-one thousand dollars annually once it's built out um for phase one. Um, and then the a thousand dollars that was referenced is specific to the option on phase two.
Which is only goes for two years.
Correct, no.
Okay, um, that's a, that's a deal. And all that they were doing the market research for the rock climbing gym and just as a comparison. For the um, the granite shed, that building down by the co-op, it's fourteen, over fourteen thousand square feet. For that granite shed, it's twelve, that over twelve thousand dollars a month to rent. So, yeah. So that was out for the rock climbing gym, cause that is very, very expensive and we'd have to have over like four hundred members. You know, sign on. So that's just, you know, an example of the market, right? So the market is saying. Twelve thousand dollars a month for rent for a fourteen thousand square foot building. And so I just wanna make sure we're being fiscally responsible, we, you know, for the city, this is a city building, it's not private, but that is just, I think, a good comparison. Um, you know.
It's based on, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's based on uh the Turtle Island lease, which is thirteen dollars a square foot for the first year and then. Fourteen uh dollars a square foot for years two through six. And that essentially is market rate for the property, especially when there's virtually nothing else up there. Um, I would like to address your and Ben's concern about risk. Um, we've spent a lot of time talking about this with Kelly and company. And uh probably the longest section of the land lease, which again is. A draft that will be revisited in up to five years from now if we. Exercise our option to lease that one and a half acres. Um. Uh. Yeah, um, probably the longest section of the draft land lease is pertains to default. Uh, and there are multiple protections for the city in. Both the land lease and the building lease, but I'll let a lawyer speak to that.
Yeah, so I'm I'm Nathaniel Hill, I'm a Montpelier resident and a member of the hub board. And all the members of our board are. Montpelier residents, or people that use that country club site, our kids have used it, some of our grandkids probably have used it. Um, we want to see the city protected in the event that two, three, four decades from now. Desires change, fewer people with land records for us and we, we want the city to have control. And so the ways in which the lease is structured offers the city a couple of protections. One is being able to approve the use of the site, which is something that's in the lease, the city. Gets to approve what uses made at that building and that would continue whether the hub or some bank owns the lease. Um, and that would protect you in the event that somebody comes in and wants to operate different type of red paint. That could be a pool that maybe sounds great and the city would have a chance to go through that. Maybe it would be a shooting range or a casino or whatever it is. The city, the point is that the city would have the opportunity to say yes or no, this is city-owned property, this is inappropriate. So that's, that's one protection. And then the second is that if we build a bill and at some point default on them all, because. We will need to get a loan in order to build this bill. Uh. The the second protection is that if we were to default on a loan, the bank would have to stay in the shoes of the hub. All of the obligations that the hub is taking on. Would then be held by the bank and they would be, whatever loaning, whatever financial institution would be obligated. To the city in the same way that the hub. So those are two and. Uh, one of the things that if, if there are additional protections that the city wants to work out, we're amenable to continuing to. Figure out a way to make this work, because our interest is not, obviously, if the hub doesn't exist, our interest is making sure the city feels comfortable with the terms. You're happy to help make that happen.
Well, I, let me follow up on that because you're going exactly where I'm going, you know. Uh, within the past year, we were looking at uh. Investing in help, helping a developer uh invest in property or develop property on Isabel Circle and ultimately. The council decided not to go forward with it because. We didn't think we were adequately protected and that's what I've uh concerned about here because. You're looking at millions of dollars in debt and is there a way to. Obtain a bond that would guarantee. Uh, performance into the future to protect, protect the city against uh what happens, you know, beyond beyond the two things that you've mentioned.
That's actually a question, you mean a bond that would say cover all of the potential rent due in the future? What would the bond cover?
Well, um. I'm not really sure how it works, to tell you the truth, but.
I think you mean like a loan guarantee or something like that?
Something like that.
There was a default on the, on the loan that the loan could be, you know. Is there basically a way for the building not to come encumbered with additional debt? You know, because I I really appreciate that protection of like the city has an option of like, what is the use of this? But I'm just thinking it's also about like, what will the market bear? Right? So like the IROC facility in Newport, right, which was a rec center that, you know, by all means was very popular, but had challenges. Um, being financially sustainable is now a sticks and stuff, right? And you know, that's certainly not, I don't think, maybe, but I don't think that that's within the vision that we contemplate right now. So. It it really becomes down to like, uh, is if the property is encumbered with debt, um, is there a. Is there a use that's viable that covers the debt that fits within our vision? That's the kind of challenge and maybe with a loan guarantee or some kind of assurance. Um, if you know, the building can inherit it without that debt, then it's much more flexible.
The bank is gonna be looking for collateral.
Right.
For sure. And the building is gonna be the number one piece of collateral, but we may have to put up additional. And by the way, under a default, I would think the city would be first in line if there's five, ten, fifteen, twenty-five years from now. To essentially buy a building and use it for recreation.
Karen.
Yeah, so uh again, this, this might not be something you can answer. Um, but I'm, I'm, I'm had, my, my very concrete literal brain is having a hard time understanding. What happens down the road when you've got a building owned by Joe on land owned by Jane? And then Joe leaves the building. Uh. Who's responsible for that building? What happens then? I mean, I just, I'm having a really hard time wrapping my head around it and a thirty-five years. Lease, thirty-five years is not really all that long. If if after thirty-five years, we all decide this isn't working, it's not gonna happen, what happens with the building? Or if there's a default, or if there, you know, you go out of business or a- any number of things happen. What happens to the building and whose responsibility is? And I'm thinking about Home Farm Way where. We had this building that was in a situation for many, many years where no one was really quite sure who was responsible for it, right? Because it was a nonprofit that then dissolved and was they had it. I don't want us to be left with that. So so some, something that's gonna protect us from that as well as, um, I think, yeah, the. The full amount of rent we would get for thirty-five years. If if that were the, you know, if we entered into a thirty-five-year lease with you and then went out of business after ten years. We would still want assurance that we're gonna, that we get our. The lease is fulfilled. At the least, I think.
Yep, I hear your concern and like you said.
Is there an answer?
You know, we, um, our interest is in making sure that the city is also connected to this process, so. There are additional protections that have to need to be written into the lease. I think we should, that those should be put forward and we can look at them and then make sure that. It's financially viable for us, right? If it's. If it, if it presents a bond and the full amount we have to put up now. That may just change the reality of the business plan. What I will say is if it's financially viable for us to do it. The idea is for us to create recreational amenities that do not currently exist for this community. It's not making much. So if it's financially viable for us to make that work, we can, and there are terms of the city would like us to review, we are happy.
However, given the millions of dollars we need to borrow and raise in grants. Uh, I don't think there's any way we could put up a surety bond for another couple, three millions of dollars. Uh, the city will be protected by the terms of the lease that relate to default.
I will also say I'm not a real estate person and perfectly, not a point, part of the discussion, but ninety-nine year leases are very common uh, arrangement as opposed to, it's not as universal. I, my house, when I grew up, we built a house on Tuner View. And it evolves and people, you know, all kinds of, but this is standard stuff. So I'm hoping that the attorney can advise you that this isn't the scary situation and this is still there.
Adrian.
Um, you know, I just keep thinking in my head, so I'm just gonna say it out loud. So I think, you know, the original, you know, purchase of Country Club Road was through our recreation department, right? Yeah.
In part.
Million of the three.
So they purchased this land, um, you know, the original vision was for recreation. Um, our rec department worked hard to put together a proposal for a rec facility up at Country Club Road, which the city would have to bond for. Because it was millions and millions of dollars, and so I just keep thinking back in my head back to the, you know, original concept as we started talking about this and just making sure that we're very clear that our taxpayers, you know, aren't going to bond for this, it's not going to come out of our pockets. If for some reason it doesn't work and you do build this beautiful sports barn, the city has the first right to take it over, which was the original, you know, we wanted to build a sports barn and you know, that was, you know, the Country Club Road was supposed to be used for recreation because that's how we purchased it and, you know, we're now layering and housing, we're thinking about community and what that vision looks like. But we could potentially have a sports barn that is not bonded, you know, by our taxpayers, right?
I, I don't think so. I think if there was a default on the loan, the bank will own it. And if we, the city wants it, they'll have to purchase it from the bank, probably at a discounted rate. But nobody, I don't think anybody's gonna give us a building, right?
Also presumably we will have paid at least a few years.
Absolutely, yeah.
Well, I think it's important to say out loud.
Totally.
Because, yes, there's so many, I mean, it's very complicated.
To be clear, to be clear, Adrian, that there were three purposes driving the purchase from the beginning, land conservation, housing and recreation, so they're, they're all part of it. Anybody else? I, I want to open it up to public comment. Because I, we have got a lot of, uh, emails on both sides of this question, and so if, if you're a member of the public who just wants to say, I agree that this is a good idea, or I agree this is a bad idea, I can assure you, we've heard oh, a good number of people saying that. However, I don't want to cut off public comment from people who want to be heard, and Dave Bellini, I see you're up first.
And it looks like you're muted.
Yeah, well, that's when I do my best work, I guess, when I'm muted. I said, you, you guys, uh, Ben Doyle, Adrian, you're asking the right questions, and, um, I'm kind of flummoxed by uh, the whole matter. I was sort of leaning in favor of it at first, but I'm hearing them say they don't want to pay any taxes. And Pellon's correct, saying the city, uh, taxpayers can't be back, uh, can't be backstopping this. We've got enough entities in Montpelier that don't pay taxes, the nonprofit capital of the world. Uh, I'm all in favor of the sports. I mean, I think it's great, whether it's tennis, it's a great game, soccer, great game. Cross-country skiing, fantastic sport. Um, they're all good. But I just want to caution the city, if you enter into this agreement, first of all, the rent that they're paying seems really low. Uh, I think I could rent my house out for more money. Um, but, uh, protect yourself financially, and if you don't know the answers to questions, don't enter into an agreement. I spent thirty-five years in collective bargaining, and if we got a proposal that we didn't understand, we didn't just say, well, sure, we'll give it a shot. We said, no, all the questions need to be answered. So I hope you get all your questions answered before you proceed. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve. And I'll just point out, um, there's been some discussion about the, uh, whether this enterprise would be paying property taxes on, on their holdings. The governing precedent, Nathaniel, you undoubtedly know this, is, uh, is the Vermont Supreme Court decision of the American Museum of Fly Fishing, which sets forth the test for what, uh, what is taxable, what's not taxable, and it's, it really, it depends on what's, what's the use of the property, not the characteristics of the, uh, of the property owner. Anybody else before we, uh, entertain a motion to go into executive session?
Hi, this is Eileen Agastovson. I'm sorry, I don't know how to raise my hand in this.
Uh, well, I hear you now, so, so go.
Thank you, Jack. Um, I just have a couple of questions for, basically for the council and for the hub. Um, first, I just want to say that I really very much appreciate the questions that have been put forth. And I appreciate and understand the amount of information that has to be gathered in order to, um, to sit in front of the council and the public to explain all of this. Um, one of the question, the first question that I have is what is the city doing to collect additional compensation for this piece of property on behalf of taxpayers going forward? So I think some of that question was already, um, both, uh, Mr. Doyle and Ms. Gill and, um, uh, others have put that forth in saying like exactly how are taxpayers being compensated for this, um, piece of property as we are footing the bill? Um, and the, the follow-up to that question is in many cities that are leasing property to either profit or nonprofit entities, there is generally some kind of percentage on top of gross revenues that are collected in order to go back to the taxpayers. So as an example, having worked with the city of Los Angeles as a concessionaire, um, we were required to go through a contract and a process, et cetera. But, uh, to break it down, we would have to pay a certain percentage of our gross revenue back to the city of Los Angeles. Um, basically compensating taxpayers for being on their property. So I'm, I think I'm asking the city, the, the, uh, the city council, have they, have they considered, whether it's the hub or any other person or entity that is leasing this land, have they considered a compensation package? And what could that compensation package look like? The second question that I have, as somebody who is not a white person, um, when I see the word inclusivity, what does that actually mean? And what does that mean both from the viewpoint of the hub and what does that mean from the city? I'm not saying that I have an answer to that, but I would love to understand what inclusive, what inclusivity means in that particular case. And then my third question is both to the city council, specifically to the city council and to you, Kelly. Um, is, has the city done its own financial assessment of how they will be compensated for leasing this land? Um, whether it is to a nonprofit, to a for-profit, et cetera. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Donna.
Thank you. I had a hard time getting my button up. Um, and I really appreciate, Jack, that you clarified the misunderstanding about the goal when we purchased the Country Club property. That it was housing, recreation and land conservation. And that indeed, the city council initiated it, and then we asked staff to look at, at it for these various things. Because we had the opportunity to finally have some control over some land that can meet some of the city's needs and hopefully find private developers to help us do that. I have a big concern that this land has been sitting three years now. We've had some opportunities to take some short-term revenue and chose not to. And I was really pleased to see the council approve the long-term lease for Turtle Island. And I feel like the hub has been steadfast there. Uh, they were there right off the bat, interested in being a partner with the city. And when it's a partner to the city, they have benefits, we have benefits. And when we took on Bar Hill, we made a lot of concessions to that business to have them come in and develop that land and to become much more than a business, they're now a community resource. And I feel the hub, and their name changed to me, it's right there, Community Sports Hub, underlines that they recognize what, what they talked about, community, community. Um, and I think they would really help the city to make the Country Club property not just on the way end of town, but really give it an identity, a place, a sense of place. There now team sports that go there, the rec fields go there, we're going to have young families with kids playing on that property. And they're going to have an identity with it. And I think the hub is going to reach out to more age groups. And in fact, one of the age groups I'm concerned about that I've heard a lot from when I was on the city council and since is the eighteen to twenty-year-old. And their real buff is they can't drink, and it's hard to go anywhere and gather socially with not have alcohol. And they're interested in sports but not being on a team. And to me, this is like, wow. This would be a great place for them. And older people, I mean, I know some senior activities really do a lot with, uh, the, the we in sports, and I think this is another one. Where people who maybe can or can't do the sport can participate in these games. And so I feel the, the video sports are actually more inclusive than many of things we've approached. And I grew up thinking tennis and golf were elitist because it wasn't part of my life. But my sons took it at the school, I mean, it's part of their phys ed. The foreign exchange students I've had recently took tennis and golf in their phys ed classes. And we're just thrilled to have that opportunity. So I hope it becomes more inclusive in all of our mindsets, that it's not just baseball or soccer, but all the sports can, can be raised up and be part of the property expansion and development. So I feel that's really, really good. And I just feel it's an opportunity. Yep, it's an opportunity to say yes to some revenue and let the staff work out your concerns. And get those built in.
Thank you. I always appreciate having you come, Donna. Yes, sir. I for, I forget your name, but come on up to the front. We need, we need to get you to pick up, be picked up on the microphone, so that's why.
Uh, so Brian Seaman, uh, is the man. So in listening to some of the back and forth, different parts pieces, y'all statements, council, other members of the public, somebody who negotiates contracts naturally for a living. Um, this five-year lease structure, and I've heard the concerns with like how it's built, I also liked the statement of how you make on revenue. Like you can't make revenue if you don't get started. You know, you can't get started if you don't have land, very, very good piece. The five-year structure in that of getting them started and up and rolling, and then having a second piece of that five-year lease where you can structure in building, getting more money based on revenue, which they might be able to have by then, especially with the virtual sports structure and things of that nature. Um, having a business, having some, some pieces, having building and like they were saying, having folks up there participating, doing things gives you a better opportunity to get something rolling and gives you the power within five years, not thirty years, five years, to be able to renegotiate how it structures and how you get paid on the next five years until you actually let go of the lease. So it actually, structure-wise, pretty smart, y'all actually played that out very well, so I had to wait, but you know, makes sense, so.
Thanks, thank you. Okay, at this point, I was entertaining a motion to go into executive session, and the standard is set forth in the board packet. We don't have to, but. Okay, Barry.
All right, move that we, um, enter executive session, um, per one VSA section three thirteen two, which is the negotiating or securing of real estate purchase or lease options.
All right, is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will, we'll be doing it upstairs in the little room that we've been doing council meetings before, and it's, we're also overdue for our ten-minute break, so we'll take our ten-minute break and then go into executive session. No. The council and the city manager will go upstairs.
And not in that session back here.
Yeah. We don't, we don't know.
We're ready to come back. Is there a motion to? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, we're back on item nine, country club road lease.
That we instruct the city manager, I think city manager, to continue lease negotiations and in act in good faith to approve a lease, but with the following.
Framework or yes.
One that the five-year renewable option for the ground, well, first of all, for the for the building lease and those options, we're in total agreement on that. It's really concerns the ground lease option in the ground lease terms. So the changes we're suggesting are, rather than have two, a five-year option on the ground lease that is renewable, a single three-year term, at which time if the hub has secured financing to move the project forward, they could exercise the option on a 30-year lease. And this would also require, the financing would also require an assurity bond. And those are essentially the three, the three major amendments that we've looked through in the minutes.
One more thing on the building lease that you want the five-year term.
I'm sorry.
To be.
Comparable to the one through Turtle Island.
Yes, where the, you know, sort of there's the option of the renewal in the fifth year, but it's an option. It's not automatic.
Sounds like we've got it.
I do. Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 You opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for all the work you've done on this and I hope we can keep moving forward and come to an agreement on it. We have, we are taking two items off the agenda, item 12, Country Club Road Infrastructure and item 13 on the land use map, they will be coming up for the future meeting, probably our next meeting.
There's a little clarification on the motion which has passed. You're saying a single three-year option with no renewal.
I think the option for new, this would be worked out with the manager, I think the option would be three-year potential renewal, but decision by the council, not an automatic renewal based upon the hub's decision. The way it's currently structured, right, would be five-year option that is renewable from the hub's point of view, so it would essentially be 10, instead we're saying three years, which we believe gives enough time to line up the financing for the project that's going to move forward.
Respectfully, we disagree.
I understand.
Okay. So there may or may not be a dual option that could be. And then that would lead to a 30-year lease rather than the 35-year that we propose. With no renewal.
At the end of that 30-year term, renew, the question of renewal would be by mutual agreement of the parties. So no guaranteed renewal. Yeah.
When can we expect our next negotiating session? Can we expect the city to have a new option?
Well, you and Kelly can work out the next, you and Kelly can figure out when you meet next.
Since the notification, then it will be taken up again, possibly as early as the next council meeting, which is September what?
Seems pretty unlikely that we'll be able to put that on the agenda for that night, but you and Kelly can figure that out. The next council meeting is February, is September 10.
And then the 24th after that?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Okay, next up, we have item 10 homelessness discussion follow-up.
Okay, so we are continuing last meeting's discussion, so we, you know, wanted to talk through a few items, but just to prep the topic at hand. You know, we did hear from a lot of people in the last meeting, and so we really do want to keep this conversation at the forefront. It's really important to the city and how we go forward. And so just to provide a little bit of context, because there have been some questions about, you know, how many people are currently living outside, so I just wanted to kind of give that. So we did provide the point in time count report as part of one of the items last time, but just to highlight it for folks, there are currently 651 people living outside. And here in Montpelier, we're estimating, based on what our service providers have told us, there are about 30 to 40 members within the community. So just wanted to put that into perspective for you. And I also wanted to kind of highlight, you know, some of the the items that are just, you know, really tricky, you know, when we've been talking about this, you know, we really want to make sure that we're treating people with dignity and respect and make sure that, you know, all members of our community can be, you know, here and present. We also are weighing that against public health and safety concerns. And, you know, we do have just some concerns around equity on both sides of the equation, really compassion and accountability. So, you know, we're really trying to weigh the issue, understand that we are at a critical point. And so just based as we put into the agenda item, there are sort of three topics that we wanted to kind of highlight for tonight. One was to provide a briefing on Confluence Park. Two was to provide a process review for the encampment policy review and revision. And then the third one was to just talk about the homelessness task force and status going forward. And so I can take each of those up independently and just give a sort of a thumbnail sketch, given the hour in the evening. And then, you know, take it from there. So on the Confluence Park front, we did, following the last meeting, work to clean that park up. We did encounter, you know, some buyer hazards there, so we do currently have that section of the park sectioned off so that we can figure out what to do next with that area. You know, it's, it was a hard situation to be in in terms of just the volume of belongings that were there. We did our best to try to sort them. And then, you know, the things that could be saved, we did sort of leave there to be claimed, because we weren't wanting to just take them away without folks having the opportunity to do that. We did not have to store anything, thankfully. We would have if we needed to, but people did claim their items at the end of the day. And so at this point, you know, we are working to manage the situation of the park. We would like to keep it open and accessible for use. There are three options that staff has come up with in terms of next steps at that location. Just in terms of cleaning everything up and opening it back up to use. So the first option would be to seed the area with grass. And then we'd be able to open it up. It would take about six weeks for the grass to grow there. So it'll be a little bit of time. There's a little bit of an investment there, so about $3,000 or so to do that. But it would, you know, make that space usable again. There would be a coating of topsoil that would be put down. The second piece would be to potentially maybe put some stone or gravel in the area. And then the third option is to put down some events across that we could, you know, open and close the park. So then people use it. So just providing some options in terms of, you know, what we might do next. The lowest sort of barrier option is just to seed it and then open it back up. So there's that piece. The second item that I mentioned, it's just process review for policy. So we talked a little bit about the encampment policy last time. And we were able to, you know, make some adjustments to that policy. They were, you know, adjustments that we were making for just consistency with current practice and then also just to, you know, address some of the needs for staff. And so we did make those changes. But we also realized that there is a need to really take a look at the policy. And so we would be outlining a six-month process based on the motion that came before us last time, convening a group of service providers, which I've got a listing, but I'm not going to go into it at this point. But if this is the way that we want to go, then I will send invitations tomorrow to these folks. So the first sort of the six-month review would include sort of initiation scoping, so we would take a look at the current policy. Then from there, we would do research and legal review. So the current policy is based on sort of the Grants Pass Court's case, which was not decided at the time. So now that it has been decided, there are additional sort of legal instances that we might want to include. We would also include a component of stakeholder engagement. We would draft policy recommendations. And then we would bring those revisions forward for council to consider. And so in that, we would be convening sort of a group of service providers to really review and work that policy to come up with some options to then bring back. We would also have a public input portion of that process as well. So there's that piece. And then, you know, the third piece is with the homelessness task force, you know, in terms of the policy, we had talked about, you know, maybe referring the draft provisions back to the homelessness task force. One of the things that was on the table was potentially making them a committee with a new charge and maybe new membership. But I also think that it's probably a good idea to also consider the other options, which would be, you know, we did the committee review, so, you know, potentially putting the committee on hold. Also might be, you know, considering using them in a had-hawk way or elimination, depending on what council would like to do going forward. So that's a lot tapped into this one item. And I just want to take stock in how complicated this issue is and how hard everybody's been working just to try to do the right thing with the resources that we have. You know, we know that we need to work on, you know, increasing access to shelter and housing. It's really important. And we also know that we've got to address, you know, behavioral health, and we're trying to do that without resources. We know that we need to coordinate with local partners, and I think, you know, some of this conversation has really spurred that on. We do have a situation table training coming up. I think that that will be really helpful in how we approach this going forward. And I also think that in reviewing the encampment policy, we'll be able to kind of start, you know, our very own kind of version, you know, within the city. So I think that things are starting to take shape. The reality is that people are still in crisis, so I don't want to, you know, minimize that either. And then, you know, the thing that I will also mention is that we do have some pretty significant concerns about public health and safety. And then with all of this talk, we really need to talk about sort of our policies and funding alignment. So that's a lot. The actions that we, you know, are taking at this point, you know, as we have cleaned up Confluence Park, we're working on addressing the encampment policy. And, you know, we're working on identifying short-term solutions. So with that, I'm just gonna open up conversation, and I don't know if we want to just take the three items one by one, or if you want to take general comments. It's all up to you.
Why don't we see if we can have a little bit of structure on the conversation by taking the items one by one in the, in the order that you discuss them.
Okay, great. So I think for Confluence Park, really what staff was looking for there is we wanted to just provide a little bit of a briefing of where we stand. really what staff was looking for there is we wanted to just provide a little bit of a briefing of where we stand today. And to get some guidance from council on how you would like us to proceed with the cleanup of that park. And so there are three options that we have kind of worked on at the staff level. We could do one, a couple of them, or none of them. But, you know, I think the lowest sort of bar would be to reseed that area and then, you know, open it back up for public use. The other is, you know, to, you know, landscape with some stone, which would be a little bit more durable for future use. And then the third option was to put some fencing along where the current bike racks are, so that we could sort of open and close the park. So there would be sort of probably an opening in that fencing, so we could go out mowing and then to open during the day and then close at night.
Adrian.
I feel like you also have like another option, maybe I I don't remember this correctly, but was there an opportunity to partner with the Arts Commission?
Oh, did we talk about? Yeah, so we, we had that, that idea around, you know, maybe potentially, you know, we might be able to put some sort of art installation there, and that could still be an opportunity once we had reseeded the area and sort of cleaned it up. We were talking about just alternative ideas that would, you know, really help the community, I think, and also kind of beautify the area. And so we, Adrienne and I were talking about that, that is for sure, yeah, would be a good idea.
But in terms of the short term, three options. Put grass on it, put stone on it, put a fence up?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I would go for grass.
Yeah.
Great, so that's done.
There you go.
Thank you. So in terms of the process for the policy review, I want to make sure that we do this, because I do think it's needed. I do think that the situation has evolved. And so how we would do that is what we're proposing, is that we would get, we would convene a group of service providers. And I'm happy to share sort of that, that group with everybody. But we would convene that group, then we would sort of start the process. I will also say that the six-month process for this review does also come while we're doing the budget. And, you know, a major, you know, staff recruitment. So it's kind of a lot. But if, if I mean, the motion from the last meeting was to do this within six months. And so we do have a timeline here to sort of get this group convened, get the policy in front of them, do the legal review, have an opportunity for stakeholders to weigh in, just to make sure that there's ample review of it and then bring it back to you.
Adrian.
So I'll make a, another kind of timeline adjustment to that. I'm in a proposal, thinking about this kind of as like a system that potentially could be sustainable moving forward. So I'm just gonna, I know we've talked about the situation table, and that training is happening, happening September 9th and 10th, but I just want to read a couple sentences, so people understand actually what that is. So so it's a training. It's a train the trainer that is being funded by our governor through the Department of Public Safety? Yes, Department of Public Safety. And so this is what Governor Scott has decided to put, you know, his funding into this training. There's an organization out of Massachusetts that has been hired to host this training. They do it around the country. They're coming to Vermont. They've did, they've done it in a couple cities. And it's called the Situation Table. So that this training is designed specifically for service provider professionals and agencies that deliver support and resources addressing community health and social health challenges. It is not an open forum, so that's important to, to remember. So nor is it a public meeting. Instead, is it a structured confidential session where professionals bound by privacy regulations such as HIPAA and CF442 collaborate to support at-risk individuals, vulnerable families and communities. So this training is happening in Berry on September 9th and 10th. We're encouraging service providers and you know, folk that are within this definition to attend. In Montpelier, Berry had, I think, 23 folks that signed up. And so we're trying to increase our numbers for Montpelier. So what I'm thinking is, let's attend that training. Let's see what we can learn from this framework. It is a national framework. And let's see what lessons we can learn. We might not adopt everything from this framework, but I think it's very important to Montpelier to commit to attending to this. So we have September 9th and 10th, and then October, I proposed a community meeting in Montpelier of providers, which I think very much matches a proposed list that we could talk about that is being hosted by the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission. And we're looking for a neutral facilitator to host that meeting. So that one, we can bring in our group of folks here in Montpelier that have hopefully attended this training in Berry. And we can build upon that. So how do we create this system in Montpelier? So that we have trust within our providers, we have trust within our agencies. We have these open dialogues across, across this, this world where these conversations are very difficult, but we can use this framework to help facilitate those conversations. And so at the end of that meeting in October, my hope is that we leave with one or two action items. Like, at a minimum, something that we could focus on that's within our sphere of control, within our, our budgetary constraints, and that all of our partners are in agreement that we're moving forward in the same direction, whatever that may be. And so at that time, I would like the group that we've convened to then have a charge, hopefully, to focus on the encampment policy. So I don't want to rush into it until we have the foundation of this training. We have the foundation of building trust. We have this facilitated meeting, just really kind of restructuring and resetting this, these partners, so that we're all working together in a very effective, efficient and, you know, open, honest way, and that there's a charge, like we know what we're doing, and the council is on board with that.
Good work.
So.
The training, I mean, who are candidates for the for the training?
September 9th and 10th?
Who would we send? Yeah.
So let me just look that up, because there's a list. Can you, I'll make, give me one second. Hold on. There is a whole list of people. Someone has another question, I will look.
Well, so what I just, I feel like what I heard, right, was we've got the six-month window during a very busy time to review the encampment policy. And you're suggesting, Adrian, like, well, let's actually take advantage of the situation training. And then also convene a, a meeting of providers, interested parties of the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission. Those two activities would inform our thinking about the encampment policy and would also maybe give us a little bit more breathing room. That sounds really reasonable.
So that wraps up number, item two for the moment, eh?
Well, it does, like, as long as we have consensus and just the motion was a six-month review, and I, so I just want to make sure you're okay with that, and we probably should just modify if the if the, there's a change in term for a deliverable there.
Well, there's a question. Yeah, I, I didn't hear that that included either accelerating or, or delaying
Okay.
the end of the policy revision. Did anyone think it did?
I did. Yeah, I thought that it would like. I don't know, Pailin, do you want to speak? Do you have? I, I think, you know, if it was six months right now, I would suggest extending it to nine to take these two meetings to give it. I would assume that that would be done in three months, and then begin the six-month thing won't. So maybe extend it to nine months.
Great. Well, I can't speak. Adrian, Jim and I talk, because last meeting, council said three hours can work on this, so all the things Kelly summarized, we also talked to her before. So I don't think we should extend the time because we need the revisions as soon as possible because of the weather and because of all the things that are changing. And I think instead of extending, we should push other groups to become together and sit down and work together. So I think we should keep the max of like six months, maybe we will do it before then.
Okay.
So I want the staff to do whatever is reasonable and possible and manageable. But I also want to make sure that we're we're thinking clearly about the encampment policy as distinct from a lot of the other things that will be discussed in these two meetings. So the encampment policy is not the city's response to homelessness or the city's attempt to solve the problem of homelessness. The encampment policy is very specifically about what do we do when there are people who are camping on city property? And so, I, I mean, I could rewrite that tonight, and it'd be done. It'd be fast, but I, I don't know what, I don't know what would really be involved for staff, so I don't want to push the staff to do it, but I, I don't think we have to wait. I think you want to have a process of getting input from people, which is why you don't want to just let me write it tonight. And it, but maybe, maybe it doesn't have to be after all of the conversations and everything where you're discussing everything else. Maybe the encampment policy could be done before that, because as Pailin said, winter is coming, and it's urgent.
Well, sorry.
You go ahead, Alex.
Well, I would just say that, so with the encampment policy, we really see a lot of activity during the warmer months. And so with winter coming, like, we're, you know, probably going to see, you know, not as much use. I do think that it's really important for us to, you know, keep talking about the issues associated with homelessness. This is one of the items that could potentially be brought to this group once we have sort of the formulation.
So my hope will be before going this group meeting, we should have at least our draft with us. Like, revision draft, right? So then the input or the information we are learning from them will be more meaningful about making changes. That's why I don't want to tie the process of that policy revision to all this, like, meetings and workshops and trainings. I think it should be done separately. Then we can do other things separately. Then we can combine all the things we worked. I know they are related, but I think they are not interdependent, is a device word, like, so.
But so, Pailin, are you talking about having a proposed revision to our encampment policy by October?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm not, I'm saying that we don't have to wait all these trainings and meetings happening. So our first decision six-month window will be enough. We should extend that. And if we want to combine all the things that these other groups are doing and help us for revisions, then we should work our first revision draft and bring it to those meetings, then we can work on it. That's what I say.
Adrian.
So I don't think it's all these other groups. I think this will be the group. I think it will be a group that works together very closely, that focuses on, you know, maybe it's the re-envisioning of the homelessness task force, but I, I see this as like the group that convenes. Like, there's not like going to be tons of meetings. It's going to be a group that meets to talk about specific issues, to talk about policy, to talk about what we can do as a community to support our homeless population, because the city is not going to solve this. And so this is a very, very critical structure within our city that we, that we need to build up, and we need to build trust. And we need to build this transparency and this coordination, because it's just, it's, we're not really good at that right now. So I think we can improve on that. And having these partners at the table to help inform this encampment policy from different perspectives, I feel is very important. So I'm not, as I said last time, I'm not terribly interested in like a top-down approach of the city saying, here's our encampment policy, everyone review it and tell us what you, what you think. I want a more collaborative effort, and that's why I think this structure is really important to build. So that we have those open, honest conversations when we talk about these policies and these and, you know, the issues that we keep continuing to face, like, right now, we're very reactive, and I want to get ahead of it. And before I go on, can I tell you the list of people while I have it up?
Sure.
So the Situation Table, that's all organizations are encouraged to attend, including community-based organizations, schools, child welfare, youth services, hospitals, fire EMS, mental and behavioral health, treatment facilities, peer recovery, housing, public safety, public health courts, correctional facilities, city-town government, and local attorneys. System leaders and executives are encouraged to attend day one morning session. So that is the list of partners that we looked at. Both, you know, we went down, I, I got the list of attendees of who's coming from Berry. I looked at the list who was registered to attend from Montpelier. And I compared it to these list of organizations and said, here are some gaps and opportunities that we're missing from Montpelier. And I asked Kelly if she would email those organizations to see if they would send a representative, so that we could have a comprehensive list of folks that are, you know, hopefully will attend this session, because being offered, it's free, and I think we can really learn something from it.
Pailin.
So I agree with you about like collaboration, Adrian. And I wasn't trying to say that we should decide everything, then it will be top-down. My worry is because city cannot do so much about unhoused and homelessness, we kind of, I think unintentionally create false hope that our encampment policy will be a solution, but it is not. That's what I'm saying. These are two different things. So we shouldn't really, yes, they are related, but they are independent. That's why I think we should do everything about unhoused and homelessness. And at the same time, we should not extend revision of the encampment policy, because it is not really a solution for homelessness issue. So that's what I was trying to explain.
Kelly.
So what if we just keep the six months? And then we'll just do all the things, and then that sounds good to me, and I'll just, you know, keep it pushing forward. Okay, cool. Thank you.
All right. Third part.
So the third part was just sort of the homelessness task force status. So we talked a little bit about this along with kind of the committee review. And we had kind of put that committee on hold, but it sort of said, yeah, you know, keep meeting. We also, you know, in the context of our conversations, we're trying to figure out, you know, how to go forward, you know, what makes sense to serve sort of the, the need right now. And so, you know, there are a couple of different options on the table. I think, you know, we could, we've talked about, you know, a range of things, like whether it's, you know, making it a, a committee that is, that's permanent, that has a charge, and we look at the membership. Or, you know, we create an ad hoc structure. You know, maybe we wouldn't do membership, but then, you know, we would bring things to, once we had it with this sort of specific purpose. You know, or we might, you know, put them on hold and, you know, not have them meet. You know, or, you know, we might decide that, you know, we're going to actually take some of the, the items that we would refer to the homelessness task force and refer them to a group of service providers. So it's just trying to figure out, like, how do we want to approach this going forward, just so there's clarity? So.
Thanks. I see a couple of people from the homelessness task force in the meeting, and I wonder, Zach or Tori, if you have something, anything you'd want to contribute at this point? Yeah, I don't know everyone who's on that. Okay. And Meredith and Beverly too, I didn't want to exclude, need to exclude you. Yeah, I said Tori.
Zach Hughes. Zach Hughes, Montpelier, co-chair of the homelessness task force. What I, what I want to contribute is that we still believe that it should be a committee because the issue's still there. We're not looking to solve it. Because I hear this word all the time, and I tell you, if we could solve it, we wouldn't be here. And we would be magically wandering. I'm thinking about 2019. What worries me here is 2019, we formed with a charge, we sent reports up. we formed with a charge, we sent reports up, um, and stuff like that. But I want to get to the meat of the matter, because now we're talking about possibly with an option of bringing service providers together. Um, and I believe that a community of members should continue to do the, do the work along with the service providers. Um, as we need them, we just need to be recharged a little bit and re-energized. I believe this is a vital issue, along with the childcare committee that you have and other committees that are on there. I believe this is vital. Uh, we see it outside. This is the issue with Confluence Park. The issue where I just went up, uh, and made sure people were okay just before stopping in here. This is an everyday thing. We need this committee. It really is not an ad hoc thing. Homelessness is not ad hoc. Um, and I really appreciate the staff's view of an option, but I'm still saying, make it a committee, recharge it with the stuff that you would like. We serve at your pleasure, uh, that's important to understand. So if you want us to do something, we'll do it. One of the things we can do is look at the encampment policy. I do welcome the service providers also being included, Adrian. I'll tell you why. Uh, because we're out there doing it. So if something's not realistic, uh, we can speak up and say, hey, that's not realistic. We could say, we can't do that, or our philosophy doesn't allow us to do something you want us to do. And I think that that'll avoid confusion. Um, I do think it's terribly important, um, and I have just so much that I could say, but I think I want to really thank, you know, Jim and Adrian and other folks who've taken on this, and I want to thank y'all for finally having this discussion. I would like to continue to have this discussion by y'all turning this into a committee, please, so we can continue to do the work alongside our service providers and our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Zach. Uh, Tori.
I'm, I'm going to second everything that, um, Zach said. I'm, I'm also going to say this is, um, a time of night that is well past the point that I'm not really awake, so, um, I'm going to, I apologize for that, but I, um, I am, one, one question I have is whether Zach or Bev, um, wants to read, basically read into the record, the letter that we sent, that the task force sent to, um, all city council members and to city staff about the, um, quote, cleaning up, unquote, at, um, Confluence Park. And, um, I'm very grateful that Kelly got back to us very quickly. I know that there were still questions that remained after she got back to us. I also want to note particularly with regard to the situation table, that, um, a great deal of the heavy, heavy lifting in Montpelier, um, and I think to some extent in Barry around homelessness is done by faith communities. Um, there have been at least two times, um, in the past year when faith communities have met on an emergency basis to, um, when there hasn't been much in the way of civic action at all, to figure out what is going to happen to people who are being displaced from the motels and where are they going to go? And it's been the, the faith communities that have stepped up to give them a safe place to sleep for the night. Um, and that have also fed, um, continued to feed people, um, who are hungry. And so they need to be, um, particularly, I think with the situation table model, um, the faith communities have to be part of that. Um, and on behalf of Adrian, I sent out, I think about thirty different emails to, um, different faith community leaders and participants in, in the area, and I hope that they will, that at least some of them will come to the situation table training. Um, I had actually told, um, the rest of the task force, because I feel like I ended up speaking a lot for the task force, and we have, um, seven very, um, committed, very articulate, very capable people in the task force, um, who do not need me to speak for them, that I was going to keep my mouth shut in this meeting. Um, and so I'm going to turn the mic over to, um, Bev, or maybe back to Zach, because I think that's really all that I intend to say. Um, obviously, I think, um, given the number of hours and, and, um, as my husband would put it, moral weight I put into working with the task force. Um, I would also certainly be in support of its being an official city committee, because we've certainly been functioning as one. Um, and I think we have expertise, um, both on the ground and expertise about what's happening in other parts of the country that has been successful in finding solutions to homelessness. Um, if I were making this decision, um, I think I probably wouldn't want to lose that. Um, okay, somebody else take the mic, please.
Thanks, Tori. Beverly Allen, it looks like you're trying to be recognized.
I'm trying. Um, anyways, um, as far as the task force goes, um, becoming a committee, in my mind, it's, it's like, why wouldn't we do that? You know, I mean, homelessness is a, not only, you know, folks that don't have homes in Montpelier, this is a nationwide epidemic. So why would we not invest all of our resources, or at least the people that are already doing the work, bring them closer to, um, our local government? And, um, you know, there's the situation table, there's the homeless task force, there's service providers who are serving on all of these city council, you know, I mean, it just makes sense to me to, um, create a committee that is working towards, um, I, I heard Zach say, we're not going to solve homelessness, but we can do better, you know? So why not do that? Thank you.
Thank you. Jim.
To help the council make a decision on this. Um, I am willing to certainly keep serving on the committee. I have to say, the last two meetings that I've met with them have actually kind of been, you know, I've learned some things. I really have to say that they've been kind of different meetings than the first couple that I saw. There was, you know, some more engagement, more of them were talking. I felt, you know, that it was almost a different committee these last two times, and, um, it just felt a little bit recharged, and I could kind of see the value that, you know, we could certainly make them a committee and give it a try, but I would certainly be willing to stay on as the council rep. I'm, I'm going to be on the housing committee too, so I would be able to tie that in together, and I may end up being somebody that wants to be sent to the situation uh, table, because I probably am the most flexible counselor with time. So, you know, and I'm, you know, I'm invested in this now. Um, along with Adrian and Palin, we're starting to talk about a lot. We've had two or three meetings, the three of us, and we're trying to figure, you know, some way to mitigate this and to do some positive, and it's, you know, it's, it's a tough issue, but I'm just saying that I'm willing to, uh, take on that responsibility if it makes it easier for you to decide.
Adrian.
So I'm going to just say this probably in general of all committees. If we do not, if the council doesn't have a clear directive and a clear ask, um, you know, then I don't think we should have a committee, right? So the committees are volunteers. They're people that are spending their time, their energy, their passion to help support the city. So I just want to make sure that before we, you know, think about creating a homelessness committee, that the council is very clear on what their charge is, and with all committees, we should, you know, hold them accountable for those action items, a solution-focused, um, you know, events, and that we're working together. And so I just don't know, like when I'm thinking about this timeline, like, does, do we know exactly what we want them to work on? And my hope is that between now and October, I would like for us to become very clear about what are the reasonable, you know, actionable items that we can charge a homelessness committee with, that they could focus on, they could help support the city. Like, I couldn't tell you what that is, because I don't, I don't know. And so, do we put them on hold until we become very clear about what we need and what our ask is? Because I don't want to waste anyone's time.
Well, well, let me throw out an idea. Um, the next item on the agenda is to present, have a discussion about the charge and the structure of the housing committee. If people want to go forward with creating the homelessness committee as a committee, I think what we should be thinking about is doing the same thing, coming forward with, uh, with a draft, uh, charge of the committee, and putting it on the agenda for a future meeting, and I, are people wanting to do that? Yes.
That question. So, um, since I've started working with like different stakeholders on this issue, um, I've learned that, again, it's just a personal observation, as a city, we don't have any strategy about homelessness. That, that's why we don't know what to ask from task force or committee. So based on my, uh, experience working with different stakeholders, I will suggest hold task force or committee, whatever we, just hold until we have a strategy as a city, what we want to do about this, if you're having all this, um, meetings. Then, when we have something, okay, yeah, these are our actions, because so, I think until now, our action based on the recommendations of task force, I think now it is time to reverse the, um, um, practice. So their suggestion should be based on our action strategy. So my suggestion would be hold until we have a clear strategy, not a, like a clear, um, oh my God, description for the committee or task force. You should have a clear strategy first about homelessness as a city.
Well, I hear what you're saying, but, you know, we've created other committees, and the childcare committee is an example where what, we didn't know very much about what we wanted from the committee, except that we know we wanted to have, create the conditions in which more childcare is created, and that's kind of why we put, we created the committee to work on those, uh, plans and, and develop a strategy and a plan. So why would this not be the same thing?
Can I, can childcare task force is created based on the city plan. We have a strategy, and it is written in our city plan 2025. So that's the difference. If we have a strategy in the city plan for homelessness, okay, let's, uh, do it, because when we are proposing childcare and creating the, um, um, the task for them, it came from the city plan 2025. That's the difference, I think.
Jim, you had your hand up for a while.
Um, well, I was just going to make a suggestion in the meantime, while we figure this out. It's, it's going to take a little time, maybe. Um, one thing that we could have the task force do, and it would be basically to me, so I could inform all of you, is to have people out in the field. And what I learned in the last two meetings is info from them about them being out in the field. We don't have anybody out in the field, but the police, and that, they're a different story, so if we could just, we could say something like, how about they just report until we get them a charge of what they're seeing in the field to me, so I can have some kind of clue. I mean, like, you know, they told me, hey, some of them are deep in Hubbard Park, and they're camping there, and I don't know. If I were you, chief, my biggest nightmare would be a fire in Hubbard Park right now. And, uh, yeah, we got a little rain today, but boy, you just look at lawns, and it is damn dry in this town. So I think the people in the field can still give valuable information to us as to where some of them are, what's going on. They don't have to do, you know, until we figure out a charge. I don't think it can take us, should take us that long to figure out a charge. I mean, just, and it can always be modified over time. It's not going to be cast in granite, but if you let a group not meet, they're just going to slip away, is what's going to happen, because they're just going to feel like, well, why am I even doing this? And then you don't have anybody, so.
And, and two thoughts about that are, one, there's talk about, well, putting the housing task force on hold. Whatever we say, the housing task force can continue to meet. Homelessness task force, thank you for that. Um, um, and two, any member of the council can put it, when they're, if they become ready to, if they come up with a draft charge, can put it on the agenda. Um, Tori.
I, um, I, I would absolutely welcome the council coming up with the charge for the task force or the committee or whatever it's going to be. The thing, um, you know, Jim is not the only person who's noticed something being quite different over the last few meetings. And the thing that's different from my point of view as one of the co-chairs is that over the past few weeks, we've seen action on the part of city council um, toward really seriously addressing issues of homelessness in, um, Montpelier. And I think up to that point, um, it, um, it had felt to me, and it may have felt to other people, like, um, what we had was several people who were working very hard in the field and several people who were concerned, community members doing what we were able to do as individuals, but with the sense that within the, the governance of the city, nothing was happening at all. And that's changed radically over the last six weeks or the last couple of months. And I think that that's why it's feeling like, um, yeah, we're working together coherently in a way that has got, um, some energy, and the energy, and the new energy is actually on the part of the city council. Um, the, the other thing I want to say, this is completely from a personal point of view, um, if the task force gets quote, put on hold, unquote, again, um, because we've been in a situation since last May where we were told out of the blue that we were on hold, when I don't think we even knew that there was any committee restructuring going on. Um, and that has left me a lot of the time with the sense of simultaneously, um, having the accelerator and the brake on in the car. I'm getting some family pressure right now, just in terms of my own well-being, um, to disengage from the task force. Um, because I put a lot of hours every week into working on behalf of this particular way of addressing the issue. Marty Roberts and I are both also very involved with Vermont Interfaith Action addressing this particular issue. And I think our, you know, I'm certainly very aware that if the, you know, if the task force isn't supported by the city and is not, um, functional, that I have other, um, avenues of my life to take effective action on an issue that I care a lot about. And I would certainly be very concerned, um, other than the sense of, um, discouragement and, um, burnout that I think people, that people may have if we get put on hold again. I would be very concerned by people just saying, this is not, this, obviously, we're going to continue working the issue until it is solved. Um, but that if the city is not supporting, um, a city committee that's working on it, then we need to find another way to engage within the community, and those places are there.
Thank you. Sir, you had your hand up a minute ago.
Right, I see I'm on Montpelier, yeah. A couple of things are very, that, that.
Have you moved the mic over to you?
I don't know.
Better.
All right. So, a couple of things, you said both of it, Hubbard Park, I'm getting, thinking about a fire there. I've had three rounds camped behind my house, but connect over to the cemetery area. While I talk about nightmare fuel of a fire, that one's even tougher to get through. And it has already been brought up. You, you had stated earlier, you see it more during the summertime. Correct, because during the wintertime, they go dig further into the, into the hills in the area, places like that, the ones who stay. There was risk this past winter of a, just that kind of incident, fire happening up in dry tinder, up in the woods, of somebody who's been camping for fifteen years in this area, and areas in the surrounding area. So, again, encampment policy? Yep, coming up with a good encampment policy, rules, things of that nature, great. People find ways around those states put in policies. They figure out if I move from this side, this side in a twenty-four hour period. Well, now you gotta trespass me on this side. Folks, figure these things out. So encampment policies, yes, come up with a good one, have some structure in place. Enforcement of laws. Again. This is a big piece and being consistent on enforcing laws. Having heart, people who are homeless, people who need housing, understand there is a separation. I had a very good conversation with Noel here on. Uh, there's a separation of folks who are in need of help, who are looking for it and want it. And, and it was also mentioned also that there's change in these last couple of meetings with the committee. Because there's more pressure coming at this point due to behaviors in the area, problems that are happening. Due to folks who aren't going to take part in society. And continuing to wait and ring hands and try a policy and try a committee and leasing. Enforcement is something that needs to take precedent. And at the end of the day, my last statement I'm gonna say is, was it going to pay? Recently, there was a big move by Burlington where someone died and council made a move to stop it. Just stop. So what's it gonna take in Montpelier? Is it gonna be a kid going missing? It's gonna be, what, what's it gonna take here? Where enforcement becomes a piece of this that needs to be upheld. That's what I wanted to say. I do appreciate you all, what you're doing.
Adrian.
Um, wanna follow on that. I feel, and maybe some correct me if I'm wrong. Last year, at some point, we had um. Was it the district attorney that came?
The state's attorney.
The state attorney? So we had the state attorney come to one of our meetings last year and I think, I wish our uh, Chief Mortison was here, but maybe Kelly, you could help. I think one of the, the issues was with enforcement is that we. Arrest folks for violating crimes and then they go. I don't know the whole legal world, but they go to jail and then it's, they just get released. And so it's this revolving door that happens. So I think our police force is, you know. Doing what they need to do in terms of enforcement, but at the state level, they're just letting them catch and release. And so. I think it's like an issue and I don't, I know we tried to talk to the state attorney last year, but I don't know, maybe that's something that we should revisit. I don't know.
So I mean, we are in constant communication um, to just, you know, make sure that we're in alignment, even with the um. Encampment policy and, and needing to actually enact parts of the policy to trespass, we did check with the state attorney's office to make sure that. That would be upheld before we did take action. Um, you know, certainly we can, if there are specific questions, we can certainly work with her. She is a good partner of ours. But you know, the reality is, is that, you know, a lot of these cases um, are being, you know, turned back out. And very short order. And so, you know, we will do our best to keep enforcing. Um, you know, but we also want to balance that too with just trying to find a good solution that works for the community. I mean, as I hear you, I mean, the, the enforcement piece is a big one. Um, you know, the, the conversation that we have, like, well, we've been talking about public health also. We're trying to highlight that, you know, more than public safety, but public safety is a component. I mean. You know, for a while there, Confluence Park was getting a little dangerous and it's still, I mean, we're monitoring it because, you know, we need to. And so it's this behavioral issue that, you know, that's why, you know, when we brought forward the um, Washington County Mental Health Proposal, which we'll bring back to you. Um, for further consideration, you know, that's why we focused in that area because it's a need. You know, I, but I also, I think the conversation that we're having tonight even around, you know, how we're gonna get service providers together and start to, you know. Really open up those conversations, you know, and keep them going is important. Um, so anyway. Yes, yes, and yes, we can do the things, it's just. We. I don't know if there are solutions.
So I'd like to wrap up this. I don't know that we have. A resolution to the question of the homelessness task force and whether it should be a committee or what. Helen, do you have a quick comment?
I can make a motion to turn into a committee and uh, with a uh, new charge. To have them continue working with uh, the city.
Is there a second? Ben.
Uh, well, I guess I would just say like, I would really, I would want to see a charge for voting to create. You know, I'm certainly willing to consider it, but it just, it, to me, somebody had said before, like, I don't know exactly what the, what we're asking the task force to actually do. And I would want to before creating it, maybe really understand what the charge was.
So.
Well, I think one, one first step, I have something to do with Kelly mentioned earlier, um, aligning our policies with our funding. I mean, it's, there's a lot of wringing of hands that goes on in discussions about the unhoused folks and um. But I don't think we're, we're gonna manage the problem if we just keep hoping that the state will do, do more. I wish they would and I need, think we need to keep the pressure on that, but one thing the committee. Could do is figure out that policy funding alignment. We're already spending police and fire time and, and money. Um, handling things that probably would be better handled by people who are trained. To deal with those situations. So we can, we should figure out what, and, and, and because we're spending that time and money there, we're not spending in, in other places. So there are people who, who need to have the law applied to them and there are people who need to have. You know, professional. Health providers, mental health providers, social workers provided. Uh, we need to separate those, I think, and we can do that by figuring, we, we can start to see what that. Budget might look like. The committee can do that work for us. I think we can find those numbers. I think Sarah told us last time that she actually could parcel those numbers out. We get some idea of what we're already spending and see what we can afford to do because I, I don't think we can continue to wring our hands, but. Unless we have a budget to put behind it. It's not gonna go anywhere.
Can I just clarify? So Sarah did provide me with some numbers coming into this meeting, um, just because they were asked for. So I do have numbers in terms of what we've spent year over year. Um, and some of those items are budgeted, some of those items were not budgeted, some of it is our pro-funding. Um, and so it's not sort of a cut and dry, like if we know what we're spending, then we can just figure out what the budget will be. Because I think it's all determinate on the service level.
Well, that's sort of why I'm putting it on the, on the committee to do it. I don't think it's just a financial problem.
Well, I think that's also part of, you know, with the homelessness task force, one of the things that, you know, I have observed is that. Uh, the group is very well intentioned. Um, and you know, some of the, the comments and rhetoric around sort of the how and what we provide for funding. You know, ends up. The reality of what we can do versus what the need is, they're just different things. Um, and so we were asking them to come up with a budget and then we can't support that budget because our budget is so constrained.
Well, they need to know that going in, but it, but otherwise we're, we're just, we're working in the dark. Uh, I mean, we have a few numbers now, but we really don't have a sense of what we can afford to spend or what we absolutely need to spend. The cleanups cost money. I mean, it, it all costs money.
Also, like, for example, in the cleanup, so in the last, you know, the, the numbers we polled were for the last um. So it was a fourteen month period, so it was a little over, you know, a year period and it was seven thousand dollars. So it's four thousand dollars per cleanup and depending on the cleanup severity, it may be a little bit more than that. Um, but it does add up, you know, and I think, um, but you know, there are proposals to be considered during budget season, certainly.
Well, with an actual budget season, we would have more data than we have now.
Yeah, so that like, I don't think we're gonna figure out what the charge is, like, right? I'm sorry, you're.
Yeah.
So I think we need to be very consistent across the board when we talk about committees. And that's what I hope that we can work towards. And I think this is the perfect opportunity to be consistent. So what I'd like to propose, um, that. We have made it me, Jim and Helen, work together to put together a proposal. For a homelessness committee and what, like what we did for the childcare task force. Here is what we proposed, they work on. Um, their charge, their um, re- report deadlines, is it three months, is it six months? Like, what do we want them to report on? What are we asking them to do? So it's very, very clear. We bring it back to council, we discuss, we amend, vote. And then we move on. The council has their directive. They know exactly what they need to do and when to report back to council.
Helen and Jim, is, are you okay with not voting on your motion until this work that uh. Adrian suggested has, has been done?
So. I think task, a task force members are asking. They will be still working in task force until we decide to turn into them a committee?
I think so.
So they will be ver- working as a task force, whatever they are doing now, they will continue.
That's, that's the way I see it.
Okay, I just wanna um, clarify it. So they will be not hold because we were talking about holding before, right? Now they will work until we turn into them to a committee. If city council approves the charge and the test. Okay.
All right.
And I will continue to show up at their meeting.
All right, that, I think we're, we're good on this. Speaking of committees and charges. Next item is housing committee reorganization and we have a proposed charge. And. Some structure suggestions. So who's, who's on, on this?
I'll move the um. Charge of Ben and I and Carrie are the three members. Um. Uh, Ben laid out a charge which is a little simpler than the other one, a little cleaned up and I, which I feel is better. Because the simpler we have the charge, the more clear it is and people don't get confused. So I'll move that we accept them. Ben's revision.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes.
So. So we're, so this proposal is just. Just changing the number of committees? Members? No, no.
Go ahead, Ben.
Yeah, I actually think that there were a couple of recommendations that were made by SGA and uh, also the, there's the revised charge, right? That we, in our conversation, we had a meeting of the homelessness, of the housing committees. There weren't enough people there, so it was not an official meeting, but it was kind of a reorganization meeting. We decided the charge was too broad and difficult to understand, so we just, I took a shot at just like clarifying, right? So that's what you see is just the revised thing. We also said it might be more efficient if instead of having right now nine members. We actually have seven, continue with two as alternates, right? And so that is a structural change. I don't know if it's two separate. Motions or what, but those are the kinds of things that we're thinking about.
What we just talked about with the homelessness committee, just trying to be consistent with our committees here, is there a specific? Like as this housing committee, what are they working on? What are their deliverables? Like, is that already like approved and ready to go?
No, that's what the charge is. The charge is that the housing, it doesn't have the deliverables yet.
Oh, there's no deliverables or anything in here?
Not yet, no.
Oh.
We don't even have a full committee.
Oh, okay.
We only have three members.
We have, we have a charge, right? The, the idea is that we would have a charge and then the committee would work. To uh, identify a series of priorities, three or four things that they would work on. Bring it back to the council to make sure, kind of crosswalk with council, make sure these are in fact the three or four things we would like you to work on. And then the, the kind of work continues.
Yeah, I think there just needs to be more prescriptive, like check-ins with council because I feel like, I feel like that is a huge missing gap for us. Cause the, the past year or whatever, I, there's committees that have happened that I never knew existed and work got done. So I don't know if this is part of this or is it just something you report on?
I would say there's three counselors on this committee right now and we're making a commitment.
Okay.
Today.
All right, good.
Report back.
Like, I want to know what happens.
We're gonna let you know.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion is to adopt the recommendation on the housing committee, which means both. The revised, as I take it, the revised language of the charge and the uh. Composition of seven members and two alternates. And Mike, why don't you come on up?
Hi, Mike Miller, planning director. The only issue I have, I just wanted to make sure it had been uh, removed and it hasn't. Is in the revised charge, it says the committee is also responsible, responsible for the administration. Of the housing trust fund and uh, just to be clear, they don't administer the housing trust fund. They make a recommendation to council. So I wanted to make sure that that charge was clear. They don't administer that fund.
Very good.
Right, so Mike would use this recommended language might be that the housing committee makes recommendations to council on funding priorities through the housing trust fund?
Yes, that would be a, a good way of putting it.
Got it, John? With that said, are we ready to vote?
So accept and give an.
If so, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. All right, strategic plan, final review. Now, we have it on for twenty minutes, but I'm kind of hoping is that someone will say, I've reviewed this and I move to accept it.
Review this and I move to accept it.
I have reviewed it.
I'm not saying that because of the hour. I'm saying that because it's great work ethic, like, like, listen to us, we did the work, you did, you. Incorporated our changes. I feel really good about it. I feel like it's actionable.
Yeah, I definitely looked it all through and I liked it. I mean, maybe some things were repeated again and maybe could have been. A little bit compacted, but overall I didn't disagree with anything you said.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Now.
Jack, I've been considering my request for executive session and given, I think I can actually, I can find a way to.
Okay, so. I don't think there's any topic that we need to discuss at executive session at this point. So we can skip that. Move on to other bu- business. There's no other business. City council reports. Helen, let's start it. You're in this time.
No report, thank you.
Ben.
Um, yeah, I just say that I uh, want to give a shout out to the planning office that the regional plan. Uh, our city plan, excuse me, was approved by the regional planning commission. Uh, at their recent meeting, uh, I attended the meeting. There certainly were a lot of questions, particularly, I think, related to transportation, national road. Um, but I have to say, I thought Mike did an excellent job of answering those concerns. It was passed. Um, which felt really good. It felt like a lot of work had gone into that and something positive had happened. I do want to say, I have to, I'm sorry to let this know, but as I was leaving the meeting, someone at the meeting called, said that um. I was a hypocrite and a liar and had betrayed my tr- my uh, oath as a city council member by voting for that at city. And I just want to say that like, I stand behind that city plan. I was proud to vote for it. I'm glad that it was approved. And I think that that kind of rhetoric is destructive to civic dialogue. And I don't think we should normalize. And so I just want to acknowledge that that happened and I don't think it was okay. But other than that, it was a great move, so.
Thanks, Ben. I completely agree with that. Thank you. Jim?
Uh, I would just like to uh, give a thanks to Chris Lumra who accompanied me. Going up a steep hill to look at those stairs that a. A concerned citizen had called me on that you ought to check them out, that it's probably a lawsuit waiting to happen. So I went up there, walked up and down them and walked up quickly to get back to my car, which was up at the top. And I asked Chris the following Monday morning to go with me out to check it out. Because I didn't think necessarily anybody would believe what I said about them. And uh, so he went with me and uh, concurred and. Went back to Kelly and we got signed, we got um, really nice barriers there stopping people from going up now. Which takes the liability out of us, but if any of you went there and shook it a bit, you would see what I mean. But if any of you went there and shook it a bit, you would see what I mean. It's pretty old and rickety.
You know, I think it's a charming thing that we have those stairs. There are a couple of things that are like little cool features that you wouldn't expect to see in the capital city. And one of them is those stairs that go up the cliff. Another one is the way you see executives with their suits and briefcases walking, hiking up through the woods to get to National Life. And and we don't see that in other capital cities. And so I hope that we can come up with a way to, uh, probably rebuild those stairs. It's probably more than just a repair, sell. Carrie.
Norwood.
Adrian.
Um, I just wanna share, I gave everyone a handout for the design contest for Country Club Road. Um, there is a disclaimer on the website so everyone knows that this is an ideas competition organized by Montpelier volunteer citizens and there is no commitment from the city to incorporate winning concepts into the final CCR design. Some entrants could be invited to work with the city council to further their ideas, but the city council is under no obligation. So I just wanted to make sure that that was publicly known, that this design is to reinvigorate just some ideas, collect additional data from our community to bring some more energy into Country Club Road. And some really fun, fun news that I found out this evening is that a developer, um, created our Country Club Road design map into a Minecraft world so that we can have kids engage in designing Country Club Road using Minecraft world. And it's just a way to engage, way to design. It should be super fun. It's zero risk for the city. Um, once we get some designs, we can have them brought forth to the council to look at. Um, it's just something really fun and just some additional information for us to consider as we develop our RV. But we are under no obligation to take any of these designs. Um, it's just a fun activity for us. So spread the word. Our first workshop is Thursday, September 11th, from 6 to 8 at Montpelier High School Cafeteria.
Thanks, Adrian. Um, just a few things on, uh, the mayor's report first. Congratulations to Mike and to everyone who did the work to, uh, get the, uh, city plan passed, approved by the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission. There was, uh, I think Mike very well represented the city, both in his vote and support of the, uh, adoption, but also in his presentation. And, uh, it's one of these things where we see our city employees, the directors of all our departments come in and they're prepared to answer every question. They're, uh, well versed in the, in the subject matter and represent us very well. So nicely done. Second, school started this week. Thank you to all the teachers and, uh, school employees for, uh, for everything they do for, uh, for the youth of our, uh, of our community. And third, there are a couple of developments at, uh, efforts to welcome, uh, shoppers and tourists from, from Canada come to come to Montpelier. We see, they're seeing Montpelier Live has, uh, developed a coupon book, uh, program for, uh, Canadians to come down and shop in our stores. And the other thing is that as a member of the Vermont Mayor's Coalition, I will be, uh, going with, with some other mayors of, in Vermont, up to meet with the mayors in Canada on, uh, on September 5th. And we'll meet, we'll have a joint statement and press conference. Um, the things that the administration has done, uh, in Washington has really offended and alienated people who should be and have been for hundreds of years are friends. And so we're doing what we can to, uh, to counteract that. And so I'll come back and and report on how that went, um, probably at our next meeting. City clerk?
No.
The city manager?
Just a few things. Um, so, uh, the meeting on 9/24 will be our last night, kind of in this room. Um, so just because classes are coming back to the senior center, so we're gonna find probably either the upstairs space that we were in previously or maybe even the art room, but we'll figure out, um, where we end up. I just wanted to make you aware of that. Um, the second thing is logistics. So, um, at the last, um, Capital Improvement Committee meeting, um, you mentioned that you wanted to do the monthly. Um, and so we would like to have another one on the 10th of September. And it would start early, so it'd be, you know, 5:00 or 5:30. And I just wanted to sort of get a gauge on whether or not that would be acceptable or not. No, just the ones that are assigned, you certainly, you know, could.
Open to everybody.
If you wanted to.
That's a signal that I can make that.
Okay, and that's, I'm gonna check in to see. I'll, I'll send around a poll just to see. Yeah, no, I can definitely do that. Um, and then the next thing, um, so it's early yet, we're in August still. But, um, I did, um, get a visit from our legislative advocate from last session. Um, and she wanted to just kind of start the conversation, um, with us about, you know, sort of the Legislative Advocacy Committee and what our issues might be. So I just wanted to kind of like put that out there for the next session. So as we go into fall, you know, we really should be thinking about that. Um, and so I just wanted to kind of, um, just get that to you so that you can be thinking about it and I'll bring it back to you at a future meeting.
And that also reminds me, we're, as fall goes on, we'll wanna be inviting our legislative delegation to join us.
Yes, thank you.
All right, and I think that's it. So at 11:16 PM, we are adjourned.